Good afternoon, Hatfield. Welcome to the September 26, 2024 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. The sole purpose of today's meeting is to conduct town administrator interviews. We're on a fairly tight schedule. We have four candidates we're going to interview today. The first has arrived and is certainly someone familiar to all of us. Brian Moriarty, former member of the Select Board, was one of the candidates that was put forward by the Search Committee. So I do want to backtrack. There was a Search Committee that reviewed all applicants, interviewed some, and moved forward four finalists, all of whom we're going to be interviewing today. So in fairness to time, we have, you know, these are timed interviews for each candidate. I do want to just say quickly, we have a bunch of questions that we hope to get through all of them, and so we'll try to go as quickly as possible, but obviously getting to the heart of the answers. So I am going to start, first of all, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Likewise.
So congratulations on being a finalist for the town administrator position at Hatfield. Can you give us a brief introduction of yourself and include what you think is the most relevant experience that has prepared you for this position and what draws you to Hatfield?
So I thank you for having me, first off. It's nice to see all of you. What drew us to Hatfield? I'll start with the last part first, if I may. So of course, what drew us to Hatfield as a family, it wasn't that we were drawn here for political reasons, but because of this type of community. So we moved here in 1999, Mrs. Furch's house. I like to throw that out there because people might not know which home we live in. But so we moved here 25 years ago, and it was because of the size of the community. It was because of the school district. As far as my qualifications for the town administrator, I think I would answer that in two parts. I think that my background in business, I'm a 40-plus-year background in telecommunications as a project manager, a project coordinator, as an implementation manager. So there was a lot of collaborative work with internal and external teams. There was budgeting. There was coordination of actual work to be done at various sites on behalf of customers, which I guess in our world, we'd say constituents. And of course, and I think most importantly, is my background as a selectman for nine years and a school committee member for 15 here in Hatfield. I also had a two-year school committee stint, which people may or may not know. When we lived in Hoyoke, I was on the school committee there before moving to Hatfield. So I think, I think all of that together, when I saw the posting for the position that Marlene will be, is soon to be taking a well-deserved retirement, and I saw what was spelled out as far as what the job description, the summary of the job description, do you have a background in this, background in business, telecommunications, IT, all of those things, I have all that. And so that drew me to apply. And again, Diana, I think it's just the background that I have. I think it's a perfect fit of public sector. I think it's along with the private sector, and I think it's a good mix.
Great.
As you know, we're a small community. Can you tell us how you will become part of the community or as a member of the community already? How will you reach out to the community in this new role?
Well, I think that given my background, being in the community, living in the community, I think that through the years, I've established some friendships. I've established, what's a good word? Some leadership styles and skills for the department heads. Certainly, the constituents know me. I would say, and you guys are elected officials, so you're probably going to know where I'm coming from, but I think that while as a Select Board member, even a school committee member, oftentimes, people don't necessarily, constituents don't necessarily, or townspeople don't necessarily agree with your decision, right? We always make decisions, whether it's to raise rates on something or what have you. But I would suggest that even if people didn't agree with some of my positions or positions or votes, I think the vast majority of Hatfield folks would agree that I'm fair, I'm open-minded, and I put thought into whatever communications I was trying to get across to people. You know, it wasn't just flying off the handle. You know, I did research, which I would continue to do on behalf of the board if I'm selected as your town administrator. So I think that's probably the best way. And I think communication is key. You know, let people know, whether it's on TV in form like this with John, the cable. If it's something urgent, you know, we use the robocall, you know, open-door policy to have people come in and have conversations. I'm very good because my background has afforded me, or because of my background, I've had to be very good at returning phone calls, emails, et cetera. I mean, I'm on it because I don't like things hanging around. So there won't be a communication issue as far as response time. People might not like the answer I give them, but it'll be the answer, it'll be the answer that it is, you know?
Along the same lines of communication, we televise the meetings of many of our boards and committees, and we use our website and social media to disseminate news, but still there are communication gaps sometimes. Please describe how you think a small town can best communicate with its residents.
Well, I didn't know that was going to be the follow-up question to what I just answered. I mean, I just think it's important. I mean, and you're right, we talked about this in the Search Committee, right? Here's what we, here's what we, the town, have doing. We've got the website. We've got social media. You know, we do the robocalls. We're televised. The newspaper does sometimes still write articles, you know? So at a certain point, you kind of say, what else can we do? And I would certainly, off the top of my head, I think working perhaps with people that have a background in communication, and by communication, I mean social platform communication, you know, whether it's somebody at the high school or a technology person might be a new avenue. But I mean, we certainly do our best, have always done our best, and do, to communicate. If there's new avenues, I would certainly be open to those to try to reach as many people as possible. I know there was also talk about maybe a signboard out front eventually. I think that came from the 350th Committee back a year or two ago when I was on the, and I don't know where that stands. But you know, it would just be another, if the board wanted to go that route or the town did, that would just be another avenue to let people know at least what's coming up in the near future.
So as we said, communication is valued very highly by this board. This has a couple of different components. So can you please describe your communication style with reference to the board as well as department heads? Also, how will you encourage ongoing and effective communication from all department heads? And how would you deal with a department head that fails to provide you with requested information? What might you do to help resolve that issue?
So communication is key, whether it's to the public, whether it's to the constituents, whether it's to department heads, whether it's to Board of Selectmen or other committees and committee chairman, chair people. I think that it's just, you have to meet everybody. I mean, I know most people, let's face it, right? Just because of my background. But I think you need to have meetings. I know Marlene has a meeting a couple of times a month, or at least that's what the schedule had been. You know, team meetings, right? So you need to kind of hear and work with department heads in other departments as what are their, where are, where are they standing right now with process, processes towards goals that they've already outlined? Do they have questions? Do they need something? Can we facilitate something? And I think that's where the town administrator role is sort of the middle man, middle woman, middle person between the board and the departments, the board and the public. And I think that is the role, one of the roles of the town administrator. My management style has always been, I don't want to say hands-off, but not in somebody's face, you know, kind of let people do their job. But if there's an issue, be able to meet with that person or department head or whoever it is and have a conversation. So to the last part of that question, Diana, I think if it's a department head that's not giving the information to me, which I wouldn't be asking for most likely unless the Board of Selectmen wanted it, I'd have no problem meeting with them or calling them up or saying, what is it that we need to do together collectively to get you to give us the information we need? Like, are you lacking something? Do you need another skill? Do you need another clarification as to what it is we're looking for? And if you can't give it to us, why? And then I think we would have to investigate or look into, why aren't we getting the information we're asking for? Is it a legitimate reason or is there a, you know, is there another issue that's causing them to not be able to fulfill what we're looking for?
Can you please describe how you expect to develop a working relationship with the board? What does that interaction look like to you? And how will you seek input from us on all matters, large and small, ongoing and unexpected?
Well, I think the, as in both my public and private career have been, I have no problem asking, if I feel I need it, direction from whoever my bosses were, or team leaders, or in this case, the Board of Selectmen. You know, I think we would certainly have some meetings in the beginning to make sure we're all on the same wavelength, right? And if we're not, I have no problem if somebody says, that's not really what we were looking for, Brian. Or if I'm not sure, I would come to the board or one of the individuals on the board that might have a particular concern about something and say, you know, is this really what you're looking for here? Here's what I understood my task to be. But I don't think we'd have a problem communicating. I will make this perfectly clear right now. I realize that as a town administrator, I am no longer a Board of Selectmen or a school committee member. So I know who's running the show. And so in case that's a concern of anybody, I get my marching orders from the Board of Selectmen, who get their marching orders from town meeting. And that's, that's the way it works. And so I'm certainly willing to sit there and do what the board asks of me. We all have our own personal opinions on things, but that's just what they would be, a personal opinion and never, never to be uttered from my lips because I work for you.
Town meeting can be confusing for residents despite our ongoing efforts to communicate the reasons for all articles. How can a board best prepare residents for the discussions and decisions necessary at town meeting?
I think part of that is, excuse me, and I would agree with you, Ed, that it can be very confusing. I know Joe and I, Joe LaValle, and I think Bobby Bedsel does the same thing and explains in the very beginning that all these boards and committees have worked together over the last year, and here's what we, you know, so please hear them out type thing. I think, you know, again, it might go back to some of the social media things or letting residents know. I mean, we televise the meetings. We publish in the newspaper. We make phone calls when necessary, robocalls. You know, maybe, you know, just off the top of my head, maybe we have a day before or weekend before town meeting impromptu get-together with residents that want to come in and hear about all the various articles. Or if they're, if we know there's a hot article or two or three, and then you, those people, because I think if those people are willing to come to a preliminary meeting, those are the same people that are going, at least they plus others will be at town meeting. So they might already have a better understanding or a better feel for why the board, we are asking for a certain thing, for a certain cost, and why it's important that it pass. And what are the ramifications if it doesn't pass? So I think a lot of maybe pre-town meeting discussions, we collectively could work on something and see, you know, maybe what other communities do or if there's a way of reaching out to people to give them the heads up, especially those contentious articles. Because, you know, some are boilerplate, as we know, and then others are the one you're waiting, I mean, you never know about some.
Right. So our town administrator works as a human resource officer, interacting with all town employees and overseeing the contract negotiation process with both our unions and department heads. Can you describe your style of dealing with personnel issues that may arise and give us an example of how you've been successful or creative in solving a sensitive or complicated personnel situation?
Sure. So the, yes, the town administrator wears many, many hats, right, Marlene? You know, I think the upfront part of this is you've got to have an HR policy that spells everything out so that if and when there's an issue, it's pretty black and white as to what, where the answer can be found. But along those lines, I think depending on what part of the HR policy isn't being followed, is it intentional? Is it, you know, by accident or didn't understand what that policy was? I think they could be handled a little bit differently. I mean, the employee would need, each of the, let's say those two circumstances, the employee in each of those would need to, you know, have a conversation with the town administrator. But I think the town administrator most likely would know that, you know, they're new. They didn't know you had to do this or had that. So it could be a remediation type of a, of action that you would do, you know, whether it's some sort of training within whatever the policy that wasn't adhered to versus somebody who intentionally or appears to intentionally have violated the HR policy to the detriment of the town, if they're on the hook for something or others. I think that could be handled a little bit differently and might need disciplinary action. So I think each case might, might be a little bit different. For myself, I've actually been in a situation, it wasn't so much an HR policy as much as it was a company policy, but it was one of those had to have a conversation with somebody and say, this is not the way we do this. And, you know, they were like, oh, I didn't know that. I mean, so it was kind of a quick and easy sort of resolution. But I think it starts with having an HR policy, and I suppose things can always arise, but that pretty much spells out specifically where things are. As far as the contracts, I've actually helped negotiate contracts, both on the school side and, and I know the town administrator for Hatfield doesn't get involved with the school necessarily directly, but in the DPW contract. And as a Board of Selectmen member, we've been involved with the contracts for all the all the team, all the department heads through the years. While Marlene has done much of or most of the legwork, ultimately, it was up to the board as well to work with the town administrator to go through the contract and make sure everything lined up.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Can you give us specific examples of how you participated in contract negotiations and manage contracts to ensure compliance by both the town and employees?
Okay, I swear I didn't know that was like the next question, but so I've worked on the contracts. The schools were, the school contracts in the past, I mean, I haven't been on the school committee in years, but, you know, they were pretty involved because it got down into, you know, not only the superintendent was directly with the school committee, and then some of the lead, not department heads, but depending on their position within the schools, dealt directly with the superintendent. But the teachers' contract had various aspects to it as far as salary increases and time off, and, you know, so it was a little more complicated, I would say. So we always worked with the school department attorney on that, as well as whoever the teachers' union had as, as a negotiating players at the table. The town side of it, from a contractual perspective, I had worked on the last couple of DP, I've worked on a couple of DPW contracts with the union representative with, from the town and then the Teamsters, you know, Teamsters representative. And I mean, I think we all just kind of, and Marlene was always part of it and the DPW director because it was a DPW contract. You know, we all did our homework and then came together, had conversations, agreed on certain things, and then went back on things that weren't agreed upon then, and everybody did their homework. You know, it was a give and take and back and forth type thing. But I think when you're dealing with contract negotiations, it's important to hear, you've got to make sure you're listening to the other side, if you will, so that you understand where they're coming from. You know, it wasn't always just about money or it wasn't always just about, there was a combination of things, and you've got to be willing to give and take, and that's what contract, any kind of contract negotiation is all about. So, and I think I'm very open-minded as far as hearing what people have to say and understanding what is in the town's best interest, if I'm the town administrator, what's in the board's best interest, and, you know, coming, trying to get and work towards a middle, a middle ground.
Okay, this is a long one.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Hatfield uses a team approach to stop to our annual budget process. We start by communicating with all of our department heads and then spend months working on a budget with our financial team. That includes our finance committee, treasurer, and accountant. The town administrator serves as a quarterback, so to speak. We would be very open to streamlining the process to the extent that it is possible, all while making sure residents have a chance to witness how the budget is built so they are as knowledgeable and prepared as possible to make decisions at town meeting. Please describe your experience in working on municipal budget, including specifics about the computer programs you used, and then can you please tell us about a budget practice that you have used that you found particularly successful or efficient?
That is a long one. All right. So, well, honestly, my, my experience with, with processing the budget, putting, helping put the budget together has been sitting in one of your seats. So, you know, nine budgets as a selectman, 15 town budgets as a school committee member. So that's my experience. I mean, I have been, and I think that the process, so streamlining the process, I think I'd have to be sitting in the seat, to be honest with you, Ed. I mean, because we, Marlene absolutely is the quarterback of this whole thing. But the important thing that you mentioned is all the departments working together, treasurer, you know, the assessor, and of course, the finance committee. I think that upfront, the information that we've been asking for the last few years, early, you know, I think late December, you might send out the email, like, guess what's coming after the first of the year. I think that's important because it lets the department heads or those departments think about, okay, here we go again, it's that time of year. And to really sit down and maybe even, maybe even as a town administrator, meet with them because I know they all send the email and they, you know, to what they think their budget needs to be for the following fiscal year, right? But to try to get a, like a personal feel of what that department may need, I think that's important because you, then you can have an understanding of why they're asking for what they're asking, whether it's equipment, doesn't need to be a capital improvement article, you know, you need to get a feel for why they're asking for what they're asking for. I think that could be handled as a town administrator with, with the department, and that may be happening now. I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt that it is. But so that when the letter then gets brought to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the financial team, the town administrator can, can speak to, if that department head's not here, as to why this request is what it is and the reasons for it. Because, you know, sitting there, we've gotten things in the past, and we just, we didn't understand why necessarily somebody was asking for, other than a salary increase, we didn't necessarily understand why they were asking for something. And I think if we know, coming into the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee meeting as to what those things are and have an understanding for it, we can speak to it better and hopefully make the case for why that particular department needs what they need.
And have you used any software programs?
Sorry, thanks. Yeah, it was a long question. So I personally, to be honest, other than Excel, you know, like, I have, I have not, to be perfectly honest. I mean, I just haven't had that role in the, in the public sector. We had other ways of, it was different, but I mean, I had to show costs and revenue and expenses in the, you know, in the telecommunications world by doing spreadsheets and saying, we came in under budget here, or this costs a little bit more, we saved money here, you know, those types of things. But they weren't specific to a, to a town type of budget.
The town administrator serves as a procurement officer for Hatfield. This involves a solid understanding of the state's procurement laws and a strict adherence to all of those requirements. Can you describe your experience with this process, including preparing bid specifications, tracking bids, and awarding contracts?
Sure.
And, sorry, go ahead, that's it.
No, was that another long one?
Nope. No, that's it. Can you tell who wrote these?
So I have not, other than through osmosis with, with Marlene, working on bids and contracts and being on the Select Board side and, you know, the big contract recently, well, wastewater treatment plan, of course, but, you know, we, the board, worked with Dave Prickett to help with that. And I would imagine a lot of the information that was input and used, and I don't want to speak for Marlene, but I'm assuming you gather information from those departments and engineers and things, and that, that helps when it comes to the bid specifications. To answer your question, Diana, I, I have not personally requested any sort of, on the public, in the public sector, a request for bids. What I have done, however, is I've taken and passed a three-day certification for procurement, for town procurement officer. So I've got the, I've got the certification, I just have not had an opportunity or been in a position to use it. And I, I think that Hatfield is in an ideal position to have a town administrator who's going to be here for two months, regardless of who you hire. But to be here and, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to be that candidate, that for sure is one of the things I'd want to work with Marlene on. You know, but I have the certification, I passed it back in June. And again, I think it's important that whoever's here to have the guidance of Marlene is going to be crucial. I think the good news is, if this is an opportune time to say it, I don't know. But I think the good news is, if it were me, any dealings with, the majority of dealings with Marlene over the next two months before she retires is going to be about TA, town administrator type things, and that would be one of them. I really don't need a lot of assistance at this point, getting to know who all the department heads are and who the townspeople are and who the Select Board is and, you know, that is already taken care of. So I would, I would hope to utilize Marlene's knowledge on some of those town administrator tasks that, that I'm not familiar with, not so much because I wasn't a town, well, because I wasn't a town administrator, but I mean, some of them I think are transferable, having been a businessperson and been in the business community and having, you know, in the private sector. So I think a lot of that knowledge is transferable. But, you know, some of those things, procurement, it would certainly be, be one of them, to just see how you do it. I mean, it's a system, database, and you just have to meet the guidelines, and I'm sure it's a little more involved than that, but I mean, that's, that's kind of what you do.
Grants are an invaluable financial resource for the town of Hatfield, allowing us to do projects and offer programs that would be unaffordable otherwise. Please tell us and be specific as possible of grants that you have applied for, then awarded, and then executed, including reporting the granting agency. And more specifically, do you have direct experience with large and more demanding grant programs like MassWorks?
So not having been a town administrator, I can pull that apart a bit, but some of that wouldn't necessarily apply at this point. I would say that I have a lot of experience with the MassWorks grant for Route 5. I was the chairman of the Select Board when we accepted the $2.1 million check from Secretary Caneely. As far as looking for or receiving grants, a lot of them are put forth by Senator Comiford's office or Representative Sabodosa. I have personal connections with both of them and their offices. The MassWorks grant, Route 5, which I know has gotten additional funding, but we worked very hard on that MassWorks grant. We actually had people from that department come out and educate us as to how to improve our, our submission, which ultimately got us to where we needed to be. But in that particular case regarding the grant, I worked with the board, of course, Marlene, department heads, building inspector, and the residents on Route 5, right? I mean, we I mean, we coordinated having them in to talk to us about concerns. We explained what it was all about. We received letters of support from businesses and residents. I mean, so I was involved with that aspect of the grant. Was I sitting at the computer inputting the information? No. Was I assisting in getting the information that needed to be input to the computer? Yes. And again, being from the private sector and not the public sector and not being a town administrator currently, I just haven't been in a position to input the information. But that would go back to what I mentioned earlier, or in the last question, about that would be something I'd want to, you know, pick Marlene's brain about, as far as inputting the information and making sure we were meeting guidelines as far as updates and those types of things, and showing the finances that have taken place thus far, which I know a lot of grant applications, that's exactly what they're looking for. Are you spending the money wisely? Have you done it when we told you to spend, you know? And so, I would imagine I could learn, certainly learn a lot from Marlene. And I would venture to say that those various departments, as well as our financial teams, are going to be part of gathering that information so that it can be put into whatever system or qualifying grant information is being looked for.
Just a few more questions.
That's okay. I'm in no rush.
Okay. Towns often have projects that take years to complete, and Hatfield's no different. Additionally, we have several large projects that we hope to at least explore in the next five to 10 years, such as a public safety building or a council on aging space. What is your direct experience with managing large projects from idea to completion?
Well, I, to your point, Ed, I think exactly what you just said is exactly what my experience is, right? I mean, Route 5, the Route 5 project, for example, started before I was on the select board, and I was on a select board for nine years, and I'd been off it for one. So, it started more than 10 years ago, it was Jeff Boyle, might have been Ed Lesko. I don't know who the board was when it really started. And then, here we are, 10 years later, it's almost finished. So, and I get it, it usually boils down to money. It usually boils it down to being able to let the townspeople know what the benefit is of doing this project. And that doesn't always happen the first two, three, four years, right? But it doesn't mean the need doesn't go, the need goes away. And so, you know, I think it's just a matter of making sure that with the board, that I would do, make sure I have crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is, done all the homework, and here's what we're looking for, here's what we're trying to do, and here's why. Route 5 is a good example. I think the building across the street was a good example. I mean, that wasn't so much trying to get a grant or finances, but it was trying to find someone to save that building. And it came this close to being torn down a couple of different times, right? And I'd like to think, and none of you are on the board, I'd like to think that I, to be honest, helped push that to the level where we were able to have town meeting cancel the tearing down of that building. We worked with other interdepartmental groups here in town, namely Lydia, who was able to find a buyer, and for $100, we now have eight condos across the street that are paying taxes, that are on the payroll. Like, it all came together, and it took years and a lot of hard work. And it was a team effort, don't get me wrong, but it was this close to being torn down. And I can't think of anybody in town who reflects on it and says, I sure wish that was taken down, right, the center school. I think everybody would agree that it's an asset to have that in the center of town. It looks great, it's bringing in tax revenue, the fields were protected behind it for town use. I mean, we did a lot of work to make sure that that particular project stayed, stayed within the town. The wastewater treatment plant comes to mind because that particular project, and I know a lot has happened since I've been off the board, but, you know, we talk about making tough decisions, right? It's, I mean, we had to raise water rates and sewer rates in order to meet the minimum town payments, if you will, to qualify for those low-interest loans. That was not an easy decision for the board to make. Of course, we raised our own rates as well. It wasn't like we just raised the town's, you know, because we're part of that, right? But sometimes you have to make tough decisions, and as a town administrator, I would be able to, those types of decisions that the board has to make, I'd like to think I could explain it in a way that whoever I'm speaking to would understand why we did it. They might not agree with it, but they will at least have an understanding as to why a particular action was taken on behalf of the community as a whole.
Thank you. So, Hatfield has just completed a very in-depth, comprehensive plan that will guide us into the next 20 years with a special emphasis on housing. Please describe any work you have done on housing projects in other communities or here.
Well, we created a committee on housing when I was on the board, actually with Jeff, and we never had any members of the public join it, except for one. So, but that was at the time, that was about expedited permitting, you know, which I'm in favor of expedited permitting to get things rolling. That was part of the Route 5 project. It was going to increase affordable housing off of Route 5, once that's finished. There was a business owner that wanted to expand and get into the whole solar and housing and all of that, Diana. So, I mean, and I know these questions are for all your candidates, so, some parts of them don't necessarily apply to me, so I'm trying to answer them as best I can. But I, so I haven't really been involved with the aspect of increased or improved housing other than from a selectman perspective, which is, I mean, it is so important that we have enough housing for the future, but it's just, it's a tough, it's a tough project to have, you know, to put forward. And you've got to have the developers, and you've got all those types of things. But again, I think the expedited permitting, which our town entered into years ago, is a good first start. So, it helps as long as the construction company or however, whoever's running the show meets certain qualifications.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And last question. What aspects of this job most inspire you, and how will you measure your success as a town administrator?
Okay. So, when I saw the initial posting of the position for town administrator, excuse me, I thought that my background, and I said this in the very beginning, but I, kind of as a wrap-up, I thought my background in the private sector, in the public sector, were just a great match. Because, you know, Hatfield's a $15 million budget, I mean, some might call that a business, which, since it's going in different directions, it sort of is. And that's exactly what my background has been. You know, my background is, as my resume stated in my cover letter, it's, my style is collaboration, it's leadership through actions. You know, I like to do what I say I'm going to do, and I think actions speak louder than words. I have a vested interest in the success of this community. I mean, we moved here 25 years ago, and we don't plan on going anywhere, although none of us can predict the future. So, I see myself as not wanting to or not, I wouldn't apply for this job if I didn't think I could do it. And I wouldn't put the town in a position, should I be selected as your town administrator, to have the town flounder at all. And I think the ideal situation is my, again, I keep hitting this point, but it's my background in the private sector, it's my background in the public sector, and I'll go back to 2000, when I first got elected to the school committee. I've always tried to make decisions that make sense for the town as a whole. You can't have special interests and be successful, in my opinion. And you have to be open and transparent. So, people need to know, as I also said earlier, they need to know where you're coming from, they need to know that your word is your word. You know, you have to have ethics, and I would expect the same from anybody who's working for me or the department heads and who's working for them. Because if you don't have that, if you don't have the trust of the board, if I didn't have the trust of the board, or faith in me, and I didn't have, if the people didn't have the trust or faith in me as a town administrator, it's going to be a very difficult time. And as I said, I would not put myself in a position to fail. I just think it's a perfect fit, and the icing on the cake, in my opinion, is you would be getting someone that knows all the ins and outs of this community over the last 25 years. And you would also have somebody, so, because of that, you'd have somebody that who, in working with Marlene for the next two months, or her last two months, would really focus on those aspects of a town administrator role that I might not have. And we're, you know, we're talking about procurement, right? I've got the certification, but I haven't done it. We're talking about the grants. I've been involved with the grants, but I haven't been the one to input the information. I'm familiar with financial spreadsheets, but I haven't manipulated the town and, you know, our budget with the finance committee. So, those would be, I don't know if nuance is the right word, but those would be the things that I would want to work with Marlene, and she's not going to have to take me around and introduce me to all the department heads and things like that. So, it really would be on the business side of the town administrator role where I would see the majority of our time. I'm sure things haven't changed too, too much in the year since I've been on the board. I mean, I could be wrong, but from a town-wide perspective, you know? And we moved here, when we moved here, it was, and I was like this in Hoyoke, I was always involved, whether it was coaching or music in the schools, it was the same when we moved here. And that hasn't changed since my kids have graduated from Smith Academy. I mean, I was still on the select board, I was even on the school committee for a while after they left. So, you know, our heart and soul is here in Hatfield, and this isn't a stepping stone for me. You know, some town administrator, I mean, there's a ton of them that just popped up in the, there's quite a few in the area that popped up in the last few weeks. So, I'd like to sail off into the sunset of retirement down the road as Hatfield's town administrator.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome, Diana.
Welcome back. We're continuing the interviews for our town administrator candidates. We are now joined by Douglas Finn, who is also a resident of Hatfield and was advanced by the Town Administrator Search Committee to the finalists. So, welcome and congratulations. We have a bunch of questions. We're going to try to get through all of them, so maybe try to keep your answers as succinct as possible, but certainly, you know, take time where you need it. So, first of all, you know, congratulations on being a finalist for the town administrator in Hatfield. Can you give us a brief introduction of yourself and include what you think is the most relevant experience that has prepared you for this position and what draws you to Hatfield?
Okay, the one-page CV, sure. First of all, thank you. Appreciate being here, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I was born and raised in Northampton, in the West Farm section of town, and was raised on a farm, for what that means. My father worked as a firefighter, my mother is a nurse, and I learned from them the important part about being employed and working. We never had much growing up, and so, as I grew, as I worked, and after getting married and owning a house or two, really still appreciated the fact that we had what we had, that we worked hard for it, but that it was a gift to be able to have that. In terms of relevant experience, I've observed casually, local government from the mid-1990s on forward. I participated on a couple of different boards and committees as an appointed member of those boards. Most recently, though, the first elected position I've ever held was on the planning board here in Hatfield, which I was fortunate enough to be elected to that position this past year. But in terms of my employment, I started working formally in a municipal setting in 2014 for the town of Deerfield as the executive assistant to the town administrator, and I worked there for two or three years. A move to Martha's Vineyard led to about a four-and-a-half years of employment as the planning board administrator for the town of Edgar Town, and worked there, serving the board as well as the residents of that town, doing administrative work, research, legal research, and even representing the board on a couple of appeals. So, formal legal appeals were, I was deposed and that sort of thing. Since 2021, I've worked for the town of West Hampton as town coordinator, which is as close as you get to town administrator in West Hampton, it's a very small shop, again, serving under the board, the select board, and acting under their direction, helping to coordinate the activities of the town. As town coordinator in West Hampton, I don't oversee staff, but I am the representative of the select board and join finance committee meetings, planning board meetings, EBA meetings to represent the interests of the town. I've built and developed budgets for West Hampton as well as Deerfield, represented those budgets and presented those budgets at town meeting. I've helped three towns to draft zoning bylaws, and, well, I guess that's pretty much a good summary, that is the top of the ridge, so to speak.
As you know, we're a small community. Can you tell us how you will become part of the community, or as a member of this community already? How will you reach out to the community in this new role?
Great question. My wife and I have lived here for the past two years. We were startled at how really welcoming and opening our neighbors were, and we've tried to extend that same sense. When we meet new people, when new folks move into the neighborhood, we try to approach them and welcome them as well. There's nothing better than first-person communication, of course, to get to know people and to let them get to know you. However, I would probably work to participate in this role in as many public meetings as possible, even meetings where there was no formal role for me, but to simply attend, to get to know people, to get to understand how those committees work, and to be able to interact with folks who work for the town. Attending town functions is always a great thing, because once you're recognized, you get to know people that way. But broadly speaking, I think that's where I would start.
Great.
Along the same lines of communication, we televise the meetings of many of our boards and committees, and we use our website and social media to disseminate news, but still there are communication gaps sometimes. Please describe how you think a small town can best communicate with its residents.
Communication relies on three things. The first is the information you want to commit. The second is the ability of the sender to transmit it, and third, the ability of the receiver to receive it. And all three things have to be a factor when communicating. So, if you're using a website to send information out, you can craft a great message, you've got a great tool, a website, but if someone isn't visiting that website to see that information, then you've lost one of those three links in the chain and the message doesn't get delivered, the information's not received. So, you have to understand first how people want to receive the information and how they will receive the information. That could be spoken word, that could be through a Facebook group post, that could be through the website, it may be by a text, it may be by a letter they receive in the mail. And all of those methods of communication have to be used in order to ensure that you're sending your information to as broad of a constituency as possible. I would try to see what the town could adopt, what it is using currently, and then try to make use of those different methods of communication, maybe not in every necessary case, but as judiciously as possible and as much as budget could afford.
Great, thank you. Communication is very highly valued by this board. Can you please describe your communication style with reference to the board as well as department heads? Also, a few questions in here. How will you encourage ongoing and effective communication from all department heads? How would you deal with a department head that fails to provide information requested, and what might you do to help resolve that issue? Diana?
Just a small little question there, yeah. Communication with department heads is critical, but as I understand it, in this position, this position doesn't oversee other department heads necessarily? Is that correct? For example, the police chief, fire chief, that sort of thing?
Well, you don't oversee them necessarily, but you're sort of, you know, you're sort of the communication hub for all of the department heads and departments.
Sure. So, again, cleanest way to communicate is direct from source to receiver. So if, let's say, the police chief expresses concern about something that's happening, the first thing I would recommend, particularly if I thought that this board needed to get that information, is to say, "Let's get you on an agenda, let's get you in front of the board. I need you to communicate that directly to them so they can respond directly." I don't want to be an interpreter for something that's critical, something that's important. Smaller pieces of information, sure, but anything that could be detrimental to the town or could be of critical nature, I would want that communication to be direct. If the department head, or if I became aware of a situation where direct communication was necessary, that a situation was kind of detrimental or critical, but the department head did not want to communicate it, I would probably communicate that, get as much information as I could. First, consult with the Chair of the Board to determine if they had a preference as to how they wanted to proceed. Second, if the Chair said, "Yes, bring that to the Board's attention," then I would bring it directly. Couching it, though, with the understanding that I may not know everything, all that I, you know, would be bringing would be as much information as I could get. Again, that direct line of communication is the best preference. And I would certainly let that department head know that if they weren't willing to bring it to the Board's attention, it was my responsibility to do so.
Okay.
I think I touched on everything there.
Can you describe how you would expect to develop a working relationship with the Board? What does the interaction look like to you, and how will you seek input from us on all matters, large and small, ongoing and unexpected?
How would I build a relationship with the Board? It would take time, just like it takes time to get to know folks. I would try, first of all, try to understand your preference for communication. Again, lines of communication being open. I would try to communicate to you at least a summary of information at least once weekly, or more often as necessary, probably initially directly by phone call, if that could be arranged, or in person, direct lines of communication being the best. As time went on and I understood your background, your experience, and even your preference for dealing with certain matters individually versus, you know, where the Board defers to one of you on matters relating to the Highway Department, let's say, then I would know, okay, there's a situation that's come up, I can go right to that one member of the Board and say, "What do you think we should do here?" But that's going to take time for me to understand and to really appreciate where your strengths are as well, so.
Town meeting can be confusing for residents despite their ongoing efforts to communicate the reasons for all articles. How can a board best prepare residents for the discussions and decisions necessary at a town meeting?
There's a recurring theme with all these questions, communication, 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 in every avenue possible. Every town is different, every town does things a little differently. In some towns, the Select Board and the Finance Committee jointly hold a pre-town-meeting meeting, where there's the opportunity for members of the public to attend, review the warrant articles, and have a Q and A. And a lot of the questions and answers can be asked and answered at that meeting without harm, without foul. That does two things. It helps to inform the public, but it also gives the Select Board and the Finance Committee ammunition. They have a preview now of the concerns that might be raised at town meeting, and hopefully less surprises. Some towns develop an entire program that's more than just the warrant, but a breakdown of every single article, what it means, what will happen if it passes, what will happen if it doesn't pass. That's one method that could be done, costs money to make copies, duplication, that sort of thing, but it's very effective, especially if you can get it out a couple of weeks ahead of time and give people time to really review things. So those are two options. There may be others. We're looking at one method, being able to do a preview of town meeting on the local access and make that video available. So that's one way to do it as well.
Great. Our town administrator works as our Human Resource Officer, interacting with all town employees and overseeing contract negotiation process with both our union and our department heads. Can you describe your style of dealing with personnel issues that may arise, and give us an example of how you have been successful or creative in solving a sensitive or complicated personnel situation?
There's the old saying, praise publicly and correct privately. That would be sort of my first method to deal with any concerning situations that might arise with an individual. And I do believe that that's true, that when a team has a success, then it's to the team's credit. When there's a point of failure, then it's the responsibility of the team captain to stand up and say, "Here's how we're going to correct that problem." In terms of correcting, finding a correction to a situation, I mean, I tried to, in one case, when I was running a small nonprofit in South Deerfield, there was a situation where an employee was causing an issue, and that's exactly what I did. I took them aside, basically tried to explain the issue, tried to hear out the employee's side of things, and then asked them, "What can we do to correct this? What can we do to resolve this?" Because unless the employee agrees with the means of correction of the problem, then it's going to increase problems later on down the line. So I guess that would be my strategy, unless the situation got worse, bordered on the criminal, bordered on the, you know, something which would put the town at risk or put another employee at risk, then more stricter methods might have to be employed.
Can you give us specific examples on how you have participated in contract negotiations and managed contracts to ensure compliance by both town and its employees?
When I was, after the town administrator in Deerfield left and moved to a different position, I was interim town administrator for a term, and I represented the town in the collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the only union there, non-school union, that is, which is the Police Department. In that case, we successfully negotiated a contract that I think was satisfactory to both the union as well as the town. It may not have been everything for every party, but it was a pretty good compromise. And I think it was an example of, it was the result of a lot of back and forth. I will say that it was my first experience in negotiating such an agreement. I learned a great deal about what you can and what you can't do. I would proceed into similar negotiations very cautiously to make sure that the needs of the union, of the CBU, were heard, but I would not agree to or make any promises or offer anything until I was absolutely certain that the town could actually support that offer. So, again, proceeding slowly, checking with the parties that be, and making sure that what was being agreed to was acceptable to them.
Okay, this is a long one.
Okay.
Hatfield uses a team approach to our annual budget process. We start by communicating with all of our department heads, and then spend months working on a budget with our financial team. That includes our Finance Committee, Treasurer, Accountant. The town administrator serves as the quarterback, so to speak. We would be very open to streamlining the process to the extent that it is possible, all while making sure town residents have a chance to witness how the budget is built so they are knowledgeable and prepared as possible to make decisions at town meeting. Now, please describe your experience in working on municipal budget, including specifics about the computer programs you used, and then can you please tell us about a budget practice that you have used that you have found particularly successful or efficient?
So the first budget process I was involved with on a grassroots level was in Deerfield in 2014, I think. I helped to develop the budget and to foster it all the way through town meeting for two years while I was working there. Of course, I was just working on departmental budgets in Edgartown, but for the past three years, coming into this now third year, I've worked with the town of West Hampton on developing its budget. For scale, it's a $7 million budget with about $3.5 to $4 million of it going to the schools. That's our FY25 budget. But the process is the same, starting with the Finance Committee and department heads submitting budgets to them, salaries and cost of living adjustments as necessary being reviewed by the Select Board, each department head appearing before the Finance Committee to represent their interests, and the Finance Committee at the end having to vote whether to grant the request as presented or to make adjustments as needed. I developed a workbook in Excel in 2014 that's been refined over time. It's still a work in progress, as any good project is, but the budget for FY25 can be seen online through the town's website now as one big, large workbook. It's a Google worksheet, so it's publicly available. It's a dynamic live workbook, so as budgets are submitted, the numbers cascade all the way through, and we can see where those numbers fall in the greater scheme of things. It also includes a five-year lookback, so we can look at trends not only for any given line item in any given departmental budget, but also for that department's budget over the course of, you know, the previous three or four years compared to their current request. It also allows us to apply uniformly a cost of living adjustment to all employees and to make adjustments to that and to instantly see what that means. And it even includes the, trying to think of the name, it's basically the reconciliation sheet that our accountant uses, so that if we make a change in the Highway Department's salary line item, it cascades all the way through and we can see its impact on the tax rate, the proposed potential tax rate. It's live, it's dynamic, it's open to everybody to see. The Finance Committee uses it as they're doing planning, we use it at town meeting to present the budget, and it makes, and it's organized according to the UMS accounting system, which is what our accountant uses. So taking that information from that budget format, it's a one-to-one translation for our accountant, they instantly are able to enter it into their system with very little error. And it's worked fairly well. It's worked fairly well.
Great. The town administrator serves as the procurement officer for Hatfield. This involves a solid understanding of the state's procurement laws and a strict adherence to all of those requirements. Can you describe your experience with this process, including preparing bid specifications, tracking bids, and then awarding contracts?
Sure. Again, when I was working in Deerfield, I went through the MC PPO program and did basic supplies and services as well as construction training. I think at that time I got my certification, but after leaving that position and going to the vineyard, it's lapsed since then. So I've already taken the supplies and services again. I'm looking forward to taking the construction courses this fall so I can re-up my certification as a certified purchasing official. In Deerfield, I did a couple of very small procurements, basically for some, they call it horizontal construction, basically the construction of a fence along the edge of a cemetery. Since I've been in West Hampton, we've done a couple of different procurements. The most recent one is for a solar array on our town hall. That's actually ongoing. So that's an RFP versus just a straight bid, which means that when we get the proposal, we'll have our sealed price proposal as well as the open project proposal. A committee has been formed to review the project proposal independent of the price proposal, and that's how that decision will be made. It's been working pretty well at this point. In West Hampton, the only other thing I've done so far is disposition of equipment where we had to dispose of a couple of used vehicles as well as some larger equipment from the Highway Department, and we actually just went out through these easiest method, through municipal. Which is pretty good. We got about $36,000 in total from those sales, so that worked out pretty well.
Great.
Anyway.
Grants are an invaluable financial resource for the town of Hatfield, allowing us to do projects and offer programs that would be unaffordable otherwise. Please tell us and be specific as possible of the grants you have applied for, been awarded, and then executed, including reporting to the grant agency. And more specifically, do you have direct experience with larger and more demanding grant programs like MassWorks?
MassWorks, I haven't done an application with yet. My grant writing has been largely in West Hampton, but I've worked through the, both the Community Compact Program as well as the One Stop for Growth grant programs at the state. Those are recent revisions and consolidation of the grant application processes, and it's great. It's much better than it has been in the past. This year, I was able to secure about $75,000 for a, for basically a street and bridge inventory in West Hampton, something that they sorely need to understand the condition of roads, culverts and bridges, and to prioritize them on a repair schedule. I was able to secure $65,000 in funding for an examination of our police operations and whether or not regionalization on some level in some way could help the town. There were a couple of smaller grants through our various insandry insurance, through the insurance company that I was able to secure, but I'm in the process of writing an expression of interest for the MVP program that, knock wood, if it's successful, will bring about $960,000 into town for assessment of a particularly environmentally sensitive road, a section of a road, about a quarter mile, and where the construction would ultimately be several open-bottom culverts, reconstruction of an embankment along the wetlands, wooded wetlands, and stormwater management that prevents from stormwater from the roads from flowing into the wetland. Hopefully, that will be something that'll work out. Yeah.
Towns often have projects that take years to complete, and Hatfield's no different. Additionally, we have several large projects that we hope to at least explore in the next five to 10 years, such as a public safety building, council of aging space. What is your direct experience with managing large projects from idea to completion?
From idea to completion? You're right. Projects like that take a great deal of time. I came to West Hampton with the Public Safety Complex project, about 30% in progress, and by that I mean that they had already approved a town's representative, they had already approved a general contractor, bids had gone out for a general and sub-bids, and had been approved. And the first thing that happened was the person who was hired to build the main structure said, "I can't do it, I'm sorry, I'm out." This, of course, was in April of 2020, when everything went to heck in a handbasket. So the town was already behind the eight ball, they had to secure an additional $100,000 in funding to be able to go to their second bidder and secure the project. The weakness in that project, and this is what I would look for, is a owner's project manager that had no direct connection to, or close connection to anyone involved, but could help the town interpret all the plans and all the proposals being submitted to them. That was a weakness on the part of the West Hampton project. The OPM did not do as much work as they could have. There were designs that came from an architect where they didn't, they literally didn't design the stairwell. Correct. They literally, they had stairs that had a rise of 14 inches at a run of eight. That doesn't even meet code in a residence, never mind in a commercial building. It was only one in a pretty extensive series of design flaws that weren't discovered until well on in the project. But at the same time, there was also problems with the general contractor where there was an extensive delay that resulted in negotiations at the end, trying to resolve what the contractor said, "We owed them what the town said they owed us." And we were finally able to resolve it through a binding agreement that resulted in no mediation or anything else. We were able to resolve it and stay within the budget. But like I said, the most important thing is the OPM, someone who really knows construction and who knows how to communicate complex engineering and constructive construction terms to the representatives of the town who may not terms to the representatives of the town who may not have that experience, and to be able to watch out for pitfalls early on.
Just two more questions. Hatfield has just completed a very in-depth, comprehensive plan that will guide us into the next 20 years with a special emphasis on housing. Please describe any work you have done on housing projects in other communities.
It's challenging to work on housing because broadly speaking, towns and cities don't build houses. Houses are built by private entities or nonprofit corporations. We can invite opportunity. We can make it easy for folks to build homes. We can make it easy for new house developments to be built. We can pave the way for large affordable housing developments and that sort of thing. But generally speaking, towns don't build homes. What I've tried to do in this, actually, my experience on the planning board in Edgertown probably speaks to this the most. We did a pretty extensive revision of our zoning bylaw, and what we tried to do is to clarify and to solidify the rights of landowners to build an accessory dwelling unit, as they call it now. In Edgertown, they call it a guest house, because that's how they're used. We wanted to make sure that there was as little adjudication on the part of a planning board or zoning board, but more simply, if you have the space and you have the wastewater capacity, you get to build the thing. Trying to open as many doors as possible in a reasonable way. Further, it was my work there where sometimes planning board members would object to a proposal to expand a home or to rebuild a home, and I felt that part of my duty was to bring them in and say, "Look, here's what our bylaw says. Here's the things that you can use as criteria." And anything beyond that makes a denial subject to appeal, and so we have to reinforce what's in the bylaw. For the most part, that worked, and it did change the climate of the planning board over time to help them do that work. In West Hampton, I'm very happy that we just adopted an ADU bylaw last spring, which allows ADUs by right, or I'm sorry, by special permit, with the change at the state level. Provided some revisions to that to allow them by right in certain cases. I'm still coordinating with a number of different people in a number of different towns to understand what that state law does allow, because there's some question as to whether or not a town can restrict ADUs on non-conforming lots. I've heard two different sides. But an accessory dwelling unit is one way to provide an affordable housing opportunity to provide someone who's raised a big family to move into a smaller structure on their own property and stay in their home, essentially. It's something that can be explored, and that is something that the town has direct control over.
Great. Last question. What aspects of this job most inspire you, and how will you measure your success as a town administrator?
This position feels like the right fit, and by that I mean the right-sized town, the right scale. I'm not a hugely ambitious person, so I don't have dreams of, you know, going to be a major planner or a lead in a lead position, or a town manager of a large city or something along those lines. It's not in my nature to want that. I live here. My wife and I are very happy in the home we're in, believe it or not. If you've seen the house, you know it needs work, but we're very happy there. It's a great piece of land. We think that this is it for us. We've owned four or five houses and moved around. We think this is it for us. It's close enough to the place where I was raised, but far enough away so that it feels unique. I was delighted to find that I have very deep family roots. My great-great-great-great-great-great-grandfather, Benjamin Wade.
Really? The Benjamin Wade.
Picture is hanging in the library. The Benjamin Wade. Yeah. That was my, it was my grandmother's mother's direct ancestor. Yeah. Found that out, wow, that's startling, but anyway, there it is. So that felt like, okay, I can claim at least some kind of providence, if you will. If I get this job, I think this would be the last job I have. I have no intention of going anywhere else. It'll be tricky, because as a resident, it's very easy to find yourself falling one side or the other of any given issue. I can't do that if I'm sitting in that office. I have to remain impartial, because I have to be able to bring all opinions from residents, from, you know, town department heads, employees, to your table and provide you with both sides of any given argument. It's not my job to make those judgments. It'll be your job to make, you know, make the bigger decisions, within certain reason, of course. That's going to be the most challenging thing, but it's also going to be the most rewarding thing to be helping the town grow and helping the town to continue. And I have a vested interest now in making sure that happens.
Great. Thank you. We're going to now have our next interview with our next candidate, Michael Lipinski. I'm sorry.
Andrew.
I'm sorry. Andrew. I have the wrong, I'm sorry, sorry. Andrew Levine. And so, Andrew, we have a bunch of questions. We're going to try to go through, you know, as quickly as we can, you know, understanding you want to give complete answers. So I'm going to begin. So first of all, congratulations on being a finalist for the town administrator position here in Hatfield. Can you give us a brief introduction of yourself and include what you think is the most relevant experience that has prepared you for this position, and what draws you to Hatfield?
Excellent. Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board, for the opportunity to be here today. And don't worry, so my best friends call me Michael Lipinski, so no problem at all. It's great to see you all here. So it's an odd thing for them to call me, but there you go. So I'll be brief. I'll try to give the condensed version, and sorry to David, who's heard me say this before, and Ed, who's heard me say this before. So I'll try to go quickly through the introduction, but I'm a public service professional. I care about having a career in which I'm trying to make lives better for people in the communities in which I'm working. I grew up with a real interest in government and in politics. Grew up in Framingham and then Waylon, Massachusetts, so I am a Bay State native. I went to Georgetown, where I developed, you know, even deeper interest in government and politics, but also started to get interested in policy, and that interest in policy turned into an interest in education policy. I worked in education for the first three years of my career, first in an AmeriCorps program in Boston at a high-need middle school, where I worked really closely with a lot of students there and had a great experience. That eventually led me to Lawrence High School, where I was running a tutoring program in the school day, actually through a charter school program, but in the district school. So really interesting experience there. But when you work at a place like Lawrence High School, you're working with their students who are just amazing people, and you think a lot about the potential of those students and how that potential isn't necessarily being realized, in part by the communities in which they're living, and how federal, state, local policy, all of that comes together to not necessarily give them the shot outside the classroom. And that, more than anything else, led me to want to go to the Harvard Kennedy School, where I earned a master's degree in public policy. When I went there, I was thinking maybe I'd want to study economic policy, immigration, some of these other issues that really affected my students in Lawrence. And more than anything else, what I realized was that I wanted to be the kind of person who could take really good ideas that were out there and make them happen. So that led to me taking courses in things like operations management, digital government, state and local government innovations, state and local finance, and try to learn, you know, how to be one of those people who could implement on good ideas. And I was led from that program to four years at Mass Development, the state's development and finance agency, which is a great experience, getting to work in municipalities like Lawrence through their program called TBI, the Transformative Development Initiative. And it's nominally a program in economic development, but it was really about community development, about planning, about all the things that help build a healthy, thriving community, something that's been a theme of my career. And I had an operations officer role there. I was supporting people in the field. I was essentially doing a lot of the procurement work, managing consulting projects, and doing a lot of work to further the efforts of the team that was working in the field in these different communities, like Lawrence, Chickapi, Haverhill, Springfield, even a little bit in Greenfield. So a great, great team that I was working with there. So after four years working with state resources on city issues, I realized I wanted to learn a lot more and get back at the city or town level itself. I hadn't actually worked in a municipality, and I was coming in from the state, trying to help people do things, but didn't know enough about how municipalities worked. So I then transitioned to a role in Billrica, Massachusetts, where I was the Director of Administrative Services in the town of Billrica. Got to work for a great management team there, really learned a lot about how to put together a warrant, how to apply for grants. I'd been on the other side of grants, administering them at Mass Development, so being on the application side, it's a good experience for me, and was able to make some good progress there. Learned about how to put together a budget. And then I was there for a brief amount of time for a variety of reasons, the biggest one being that I was recruited to my current role, where I now work in the city of Newburyport, where I'm the Chief of Staff. The position used to be known as the Chief Administrative Officer, so it's still kind of a little bit of that, so it's a great experience for a role like this. And in that position, I'm really working on basically everything. So I help the mayor. What I say most of all is that I'm helping him frame decisions that he's making, so helping him, you know, arrive at the right decisions to make. But I am responsible for all the collective bargaining agreements, for our budget process, for grant applications and management at times. And really, I'm the first person that department heads and other staff go to when trying to work out any issues. So I'm working very closely with the HR department on any personnel management as well. So that's a fantastic opportunity that I've had. I'd really now like to take the opportunity to do two things, and one is to take that higher leadership role as a town administrator, and to be the person responsible for all those tasks. I think, feel like it's the next stage in my career, and I feel like I have a lot to give back, especially in a special community, one like Hatfield. I think you'll see from a resume that I have, you know, moved around in some ways, but that's really because, in part, I've been trying to find, you know, the right home, both for my professional and personal life. And my wife and I are currently living in Lowell, Massachusetts, but we're looking to make a move, and she has ties to Western Mass, and we're really looking at it as a place that we can raise our family. We have a nine-month, oh, 10-month-old daughter at home, and I'll show pictures afterwards, unless it has to be in a public record. I'm happy to show pictures, so if you need to share them with the community. Pretty cute. And we're looking for the right place to start that home. And living out here in the Pioneer Valley, it feels like the right place. So I'll start there.
Excellent. As you know, we are a small community. Can you tell us how you'll become part of the community, or as a member of this committee already, how will you reach out to the community in this new role?
You know, it's a fantastic question, and really, it's by showing up. So I did this in Billrica, I did this in Newburyport, and I've done it in the communities that I worked with at Mass Development. Just look for those opportunities to show up, and whether that's, you know, staying after hours to go to high school play, or a soccer game, or something else, wherever you're going to see people, it's important to be there. I also think it's really important just to be the one who can pick up the phone. If people are going to call you after hours, which they will, you know, want to show that you're there, that you're a part of it, that the day doesn't stop at 4:30 PM. You really do need to be a part of it. So I'd want to show up. I also, it's important to me, in any position I've had, to meet people where they're at. You know, a lot of people aren't going to come to town hall during office hours, whether it's because, you know, of their job, or their family, or something else. You need to look for other opportunities to reach people. And the amount of community engagement that a municipality has to do these days just means you look for opportunities to meet people where they're at. And I think I have a record of doing that, whether it was small business owners in Fall River, or clam diggers in Newburyport, you know, you try to meet people where they're at.
Along the same lines of communication, we televise the meetings of many of our boards and committees, and we use our website and social media to disseminate news, but still there are communication gaps sometimes. Please describe how you think a small town can best communicate with its residents.
Sure. No, you do great work on your website and social media. I think that's a great place to start, and definitely the people who want to follow you there will read what you have. I started a Nextdoor page, too, in Newburyport. That was somewhat successful. It's also good just to keep an eye on what people are saying in the community. The absolute best way that we've had to reach people that we did in Newburyport, and I would do anywhere if resources are available and there's interest from folks in doing so, is to send letters in water bills or property tax bills. Everybody gets them, most people read them, and most people will read an insert that's included in there. So if there's something important that's coming out, or just maybe an angle, hey, here's your budget this year, here's what it looks like, kind of establish for people this idea that you want to provide that extra information for them. That's the absolute best way we've had of reaching people. And then you start looking at what are your specific groups that maybe you can reach out to. Obviously, the COA is a fantastic way to reach elderly population. You've got recreation schools for reaching families and younger people. We've found that there's always opportunities to improve our communications collaboration with schools, so having a full district here in Hatfield is a good opportunity. And then you just try to get creative for anything else, whether it's, if DPW has road signs they can put up for something important, remind people about elections, special town meetings, that's great. Skywriting's usually not a great option, but, you know, if we can get there, great.
Great. So communication is valued very highly by this board. Can you please describe your communication style with reference to the board, as well as department heads? Also, how will you encourage ongoing and effective communication from all department heads? And how would you deal with a department head that fails to provide you with requested information? What might you do to help resolve this issue?
Yeah.
There's about 12 questions in there, sorry.
I will pick the ones I want to answer. I'll go from there. I'll try to answer them. So I was going to start with regularity. I think that's the key to it. Establishing a schedule is really helpful, whether that's weekly, bi-weekly check-ins with the Select Board Chair, and then, you know, with staff who you need to be speaking with really regularly, make sure that you have time set up in the weekly calendar. I think there's been some pushback in recent years about having that regular time in a calendar, because sometimes you just end up filling that space to meet the meeting, but I think it's more important to set it aside, because otherwise, things do fall by the wayside. So you've got to set that regular communication pattern, and then keep reevaluating and see if that's the right pattern, but usually it is. So set that up for, definitely with the Select Board, through the Chair, work with the Chair to figure out what the pattern of communication is with other members. I think, you know, there's a good flow in Hatfield about separating different issues for different members, so you make sure you're checking in on different projects and committees with them, and do that with regularity. If someone's having trouble with the schedule, so if the regular meetings aren't working, or if, say, they're not great at answering emails, or they don't have the time to answer phone calls, you know, it comes back to this idea of meet people where they're at. So maybe it's, I'm not aware of what their schedule looks like. You know, something I've thought about is, early on, I think it'd be great to shadow every department head and shadow every department, and get a sense of what their day looks like and what sorts of things they're working on. So if I can have a better understanding of when works for them to check in, or get a sense of, you know, why it's a challenge to communicate in the way that I've recommended, then we can try to find a solution to that. So try to meet folks where they're at, but also show that communication is a part of management, it's a part of being able to run the town well. So if that's a challenge to communicate and to work in the style that we're talking about, try to figure out what the solution to that is.
Can you please describe how you would expect to develop a working relationship with the Board? What does that interaction look like to you, and how will you seek input from us all, us on all matters, large and small, ongoing and unexpected?
Yeah, absolutely. So obviously, it starts with listening. You know this town better than I do. I've read a lot of reports and watched a lot of meetings, but that's maybe an ounce of the amount of knowledge you have about this town. And I'd want to start with understanding what you think makes a successful town, what you think makes a successful administration, what you think makes a successful administrator, and work with you to become that version of the town administration administrator that you'd want to see. So after listening and establishing that regular communication, I think it's really looking at what my responsibilities are, and being clear together about what you expect from me and what I expect to be able to deliver. So I think having those clear expectations and goals together is important. You know, I serve as the administrative, the Chief Administrative Officer right now, and it's all about being able to stay on top of deadlines, understand, you know, what needs to be done on a certain calendar, and balancing, you know, what's urgent and what's important, and being able to schedule those things that are urgent and important, and take care of that for the Board, for the decision-maker, and look for those things that are not urgent but important, and make sure that we're scheduling them and doing them when it makes sense. So all those things, I think, can help create a successful, successful interaction environment.
Town meeting can be confusing for residents despite our ongoing efforts to communicate the reasons for all the articles. How can a board best prepare residents for the discussions and decisions necessary at a town meeting?
Yeah, it's a great question. I've seen a lot of good work being done recently in preparation beforehand, whether it's a Zoom meeting. Zoom meeting that's optional for residents, or something that's put out on Hatfield Community Television, that maybe just goes over some of the articles that could be a surprise to folks. I've seen YouTube and video series done with the different board members, kind of talking through some of the orders, so that people can watch them. It's a good idea, maybe 15 people will watch it, I hope more. But if some people watch it, they can tell their friends about it, which is great. I think putting the information out there is really good, and then being strategic about thinking, who are some thought leaders in the community, who might be good at getting more information out there to folks? So if you're making it available, but you're also trying to work with the groups and stakeholders who will communicate it to other people, I think that can be really good. I definitely think making use of video and technology is helpful here. Obviously, everyone gets warned. It's just a question of heading off in advance what questions you think people are going to have. You're always going to be surprised by something, who knew it would be snow and ice this year? But there'll always be something you can't quite expect, but at least you can try to get ahead of some of those questions.
Thank you. Oh, it's me next. Our town administrator works as our human resource officer, interacting with all town employees and overseeing the contract negotiation process with both our union and our department heads. Can you describe your style of dealing with personnel issues that may arise, and give us an example of how you've been successful or creative in solving a sensitive or complicated personnel situation?
Ooh, creativity. Interesting. Sure. So I'll say, so anytime that I've worked on personnel issues, I've been lucky to have a great team to work with. I'm ready to take on these issues on my own, but I would still look to see who's on my team and who can I work with, whether it's a supervisor for a personnel issue, or it's the board as we negotiate a contract, and certainly with the help of town council, really important to understand what the legal issues are first, anytime you're going to approach an issue like this. So that's usually where I start, is trying to understand what the problem is. So I'll meet with all the involved parties, meet with the supervisor, meet with, when it's appropriate, the employee themselves. If there's some kind of issue, make sure I'm hearing their side. If they're a represented employee, make sure I'm speaking with the union, and giving them the opportunity to have union presence in any kind of meeting. Usually try to do all my research first and understand what's going on, find out what laws or other town policies relate to it first, so I can really understand what the options are. So as far as creativity goes, I had a difficult situation with two departments that were sharing an admin in the last year, and there were a lot of issues that were coming from that issue of management. And the structure just wasn't working. Each of the departments had their own, one had two and a half people, and one had one and a half people. And that structure just wasn't working. And we were able to redefine job descriptions, so that each one did have their own full admin, didn't have to share anybody. And it wasn't, didn't end up being a solution that cost us more money, which is great. I don't like solving personnel issues by throwing money at them, I don't think that's appropriate. But it was an issue in workflows and job descriptions. So I think being creative there, being able to look at what those job descriptions really looked like, so that someone wasn't being torn into two different workflows in a way that really interrupted what they were trying to do, made a lot of sense. So that was a good creative solution that I think has worked well.
Can you give us specific examples on how you have participated in contract negotiations and managed contracts to ensure compliance by both the town and the employees?
Sure. So I am one of the members of a three-person contract negotiating team in the city of Newburyport. I work with our finance director and our HR director to negotiate all of those contracts. We had four open contracts a month ago, and I think we're very close to getting all of those completed right now, which is great. We really had too many that were open at the same time, but we're doing well there. I'm sorry, the question was about staying on top of contracts and making sure they're successfully managed?
How you manage to ensure the compliance by both the town and employees?
Great, perfect. So yeah, so once that contract is actually done, and it's so important while you're negotiating it, to really understand the details and the meanings of every single phrase. We're dealing with this right now, the contract that we're closing out about some of our employees who have to be working on holidays, if they're going to be receiving extra compensation for that, which they are, defining what those holidays are and when they start. Is Christmas Eve a holiday that lasts all day, or does it start at 3:00 PM? All those things are really important, to make sure that you're defining them specifically and working those things out in the contract process. And then, if it does end up being open as an issue, when you're managing that contract, hopefully, you've built good relationships with the union staff and good relationships with the employees, so that you can actually discuss this in good faith. And that's something that we've been able to do, is we have good relationships with the business agents for our unions, and if there is a dispute about what something means, we've been able to work through them, looking at precedent, looking at legal implications, anything else, and come to a solution that works. So a specific example, there's that holiday one, there's one we're working through right now around the presence of having security cameras in some of our buildings, and what that means about language that might be in our contracts, about surveillance, about what's allowed, what's not. So we've been able to bargain in some of that in a way that I think has worked for everybody, and has been in line with labor law, and has made employees and management feel more secure.
Okay, we've got a long one.
All right, let's do it.
Hatfield uses a team approach to our annual budget process. We start by communicating with all of our department heads, and then spend months working on a budget with our financial team that includes our finance committee, our treasurer, our accountant, et cetera. The town administrator serves as the quarterback, so to speak. We would be happy to, we would be very open to streamlining the process to the extent that it is possible, all while making sure town residents have a chance to witness how the budget is built, so they are knowledgeable and prepared as possible to make decisions at town meeting. So please describe your experience in working on a municipal budget, including specifics about computer programs you use.
Sure.
And then would you please tell us about a budget practice that you have used that you found particularly successful or efficient?
Excellent. Okay. So I think this is a great goal. I think it's fantastic to be able to show folks how the budget is built, and that there's collaboration on each step of the way. I'm sure that can feel like an unwieldy process at times, but it's absolutely worth it to be able to have the buy-in for how this comes together. Now, I'm working in a city government right now, so it is more streamlined, but I think we lose a little bit of that collaboration along the way. So most of our budget is built using pre-existing Excel templates that we have, and pre-existing Word templates we have. I will say, something I'd love to work on, and I know it's a lot of work, but it could really be worth it, is to create a full budget book that has departments and boards and everything else broken down by, it basically functions as an annual report and a budget book at the same time. So you do have more details about FTEs in each department, more details about change over last year, and five-year trends, goals for the department, something like that. We do put that together in Newburyport through the specifications of the Government Financial Officers Association. And it's a good budget book. I think that helps build a lot of trust in what we put together. So I would recommend trying to head in a direction like that. It's a lot of work, but it could be worth it if everyone agrees that we try to get there. I would say, on our side, some things that I've seen that work well is, we do have pretty intense budget hearings with our city council. Now, that takes place after the budget's already put together, so it's kind of a trade-off. We do have something that I like, is a check-in meeting long before the budget process starts. We have it in November of each year, that's by charter, and that's a joint meeting with schools and the city, where we talk about what we're expecting to see for budgets. So it's an opportunity to talk about things that we could fix in the future. So having an early meeting is probably helpful. Opportunities to streamline is a really good question, and I'm not ready yet to say what things I might want to jump in there with, because I'd really need to understand what's working for folks and what's not. It feels like, in watching your town meeting and some of your finance committee meetings, you've got a really good, engaged finance committee who understands how the budget process works. I love that you have the capital planning committee. I think that's something that I wish we had in some ways in Newburyport, just to have more community involvement in the capital planning, too. Yeah, I don't have a great answer about streamlining at the moment, but I would have the goal of trying to put together the full budget book, and maybe in, because there's so much work that has to come centralized from that, there'd be maybe an extra step of, say, town staff doing a first set of work on it, and then bringing it back to finance committee, which is still an opportunity for collaboration before, but there's a little bit that's centralized before you take it back to the community. So that's my first step at it.
Great. So the town administrator serves as a procurement officer for Hatfield. This involves a solid understanding of the state's procurement laws and a strict adherence to all of those requirements. Can you describe your experience with this process, including preparing bid specifications, tracking bids, and awarding contracts?
So I've been working with procurement in different forms since I started working in state government. I did a decent amount of procurement work on different consulting contracts and other things. When I worked at Mass Development, we were exempt from the state's 30B law, but I learned good practices there, and good organization skills in tracking bids and following the right practices and everything else. Since working in town government, I've been more exposed to this field, and have worked on a number of procurements. And I have gone through, recently in the last year, the state's MCPPO certification process, and I'm proud to announce that as of this month, I am now a certified public purchasing official. So I do have that credential taken care of, which is great. I've worked on a couple construction and design-related procurements, and have also worked on some smaller, just consulting procurements as well. But I'm comfortable with all of the elements of the procurement law. I am certified now, and would be comfortable taking that role, leaning on some of the state's advice that's out there, since there really is a lot of great guidance in that field for, especially new purchasing officials.
Grants are a invaluable financial resource for the town of Hatfield, allowing us to do projects and offer programs that we would be unaffordable otherwise. Please tell us, and be specific as possible, of grants that you have applied for, then awarded, and then executed, including reporting to the agency. And more specifically, do you have direct experience with larger and more demanding grant programs like MassWorks?
Great. So I'm hoping I'll have more experience in MassWorks soon. I did just complete a pretty large MassWorks application for Newburyport. We're waiting to find out if we'll receive that, but it's a good, strong application for a potential private development downtown, and for our infrastructure piece of that. So I think it's a good application. We have support from the private property owner. It fits really well with the state's housing goals, so hoping to see that that goes through. So in Billrica, I brought in $300,000 worth of grants, about $240,000 through the Green Communities Program. I also was responsible for completing our first Green Communities Report. Got some great assistance from our Regional Planning Association on that, but there still was a lot of wrangling from my office and from me to have to complete that. So used to grant reporting, for sure. State grants, I like a lot. They're usually pretty well structured, and I've been on the other side of them, too, as I mentioned. I used to run grant programs for Mass Development, including on small business improvement programs and on some municipal innovation programs. So I'm used to being on both sides of the table for grants. Also, in Billrica, I helped us receive, I wrote the application for a state grant for municipal cybersecurity as well. In Newburyport, right now, we're working through a pretty big federal earmark that we've received, and the fun thing about federal earmarks is now, usually, they end up becoming grant applications on their own as well. So this is a program through the EPA that we're doing for reservoir protection. We have a large infrastructure project that we'll need to do for one of our largest reservoirs, and I'm coordinating the grant application that will be sent to the EPA for that, helping us, I've been the decision-maker, on figuring out how we should be spending those funds. We had initial application that went in, but the language was pretty vague in the federal earmark, so making sure that we're prioritizing the right projects for that. And then, I've spent a lot of time today in finalizing some grant reports with the Department of Homeland Security for a safe boot for our harbor master's office. So definitely a lot of work in applying for, tracking grants. We have a great grant manager in Newburyport that I've been lucky to work with. We didn't have a grants writer in Billrica, so I did a decent amount of that there. Here, we have some help on some of the federal application sides, but I'm still doing a lot on the reporting and financial management and other things like that.
Great, thank you.
Towns often have projects that take years to complete, and Hatfield's no different. Additionally, we have several large projects that we hope to at least explore in the next five to 10 years, such as a public safety building or a council on aging space. What is your direct experience with managing large projects from idea to completion?
Great. So we're not at completion right yet, but I'm, we're working really closely. We'll be at 100% design shortly on a community services recreation center in Newburyport. And this has been in the works for many years, so I missed the idea stage, but getting us to this point of choosing a location, advancing the design work, and getting us support from the community, from the city council, and also doing some significant fundraising, I've been involved in all of that. So my role on that project is mostly on the coordination with the city council side, and with, as a member of the building committee, reviewing applications for designers, reviewing early design. I am not the project manager on that project, but I'm comfortable working with the design team and building team on that. I was on the building team for two projects in Billrica while I was there. They had a lot of capital projects going on, so I signed in on a lot of meetings, and followed up on a lot of issues that were going on with those projects. One was to redo an old school, really fantastic adaptive reuse on an old school right across from town hall into a media center, great project, and then building of a fire station as well. And I've been through building of a fire station as well in Newburyport. So spent a lot of time with capital projects. I have not had to serve as the point person for either of them, but I have been around enough project managers, and now with the procurement certification and everything else, I feel comfortable working with that team or serving as the manager of that team.
Great, just two more questions.
Oh, wow.
Get in there.
I can speak slower now.
Hatfield has just completed a very in-depth, comprehensive plan that will guide us into the next 20 years with a special emphasis on housing. Please describe any work you have done on housing projects in other communities.
Sure. So that's a fantastic plan that you have. So any town administrator, and certainly the board are going to be very lucky to get to work with that plan. It looks like it was an excellent community process to put that together. It's been a great resource for me in getting to learn more about the challenges facing Hatfield, getting to read through that. And certainly, the housing issues are really interesting, especially as they mix with the first goal of making room for the river. So thinking about the sustainability issues, while you also think about opportunities for economic and community and housing development, they go hand in hand, and they're going to be a real challenge for the future, but not one that's insurmountable. Fortunately, I have a lot of experience from Newburyport with sustainability issues. We have to worry about what we're going to do with coastal flooding, as well as river flooding between the Meramec and the ocean, especially on Plum Island. So I've dealt a lot with these resiliency issues, and helped us think through what our choices are going to look like on rezoning or anything else. So I've been involved in the zoning advisory group, working with that, and with our planning department to help set that up, to help frame these issues. It was a way to bring together our planning department, city councilors, affordable housing staff, planning board, and others, to think about how we're going to adapt to all the different kinds of challenges that we're facing in the future, and immediately how we're going to implement the state's... we're going to implement the state's MBTA communities law. So we have a proposal that's under state review right now. We've just introduced it back to our city council so that we're ready to hit go on that. But we had a really good process there. I'm very lucky. I can't take credit for this. I could try, but I can't take credit for this. We had an existing 40R district, Smart Growth District, when I came in. I'd recommend that to those communities. It's been extremely helpful for us, and it's been a good way to lead the way towards our MBTA communities fulfillment. So that got us about half the way there. We've expanded that district slightly into parts of our industrial park in ways that we think are still going to be able to allow for, you know, strong commercial growth, but also for some thriving communities right near MBTA Station. So that's been a good solution and something that I've been happy to work with. Affordable Homes Act just passed by the state means that we're adapting our ADU law right now. We had an in-law apartment regulation, so we've kind of tossed that and started again with ADU language instead. I'm very bullish on ADUs. I think when managed properly, they can be a great solution for adding room for more families. And as someone who's trying to figure out where my mother-in-law will live someday, I definitely care about having ADUs that work in communities. So I would say those are my first -- oh, the other thing I've worked on is negotiations with private developers. So we have a number of privately owned sites in Newburyport, and we have limited control over those, especially right now while we're not in compliance with our 40B regulations. We're at 9.45% of rural housing, so we're close, but we're out of it right now. So we have the opportunity to try to get up there, maybe with one strong 40B, friendly 40B project. So I've been involved in the negotiations there. Also, run point on negotiations with a very large developer in a very sensitive area of our city, right next to downtown, right on the river. That's been a vacant boatyard for years. And I think the time is ripe for development there, but we also have new sustainability and resiliency issues to worry about on that site, too. So it's been a really good negotiation the last couple of years. It's been a good reset with the new mayor on that site, and I've been happy to run point on that. I think we're close. It really started by building the right teams. We were able to bring in a special counsel on that and bring in a planner who I know and trust, who's been able to help us with it. So we've got the right team together. We've got some good consensus from the community, and we'll see. It's only been since 2008 that they've been trying to develop it, and maybe we're close. So there you go.
Great, last question.
Great.
What aspects of this job most inspire you? And how will you measure your success as a town administrator?
So what inspires me most is I've watched a lot of your board meetings, and really, I'm not trying to flatter. There really is a sense of collaboration here. There really is a sense of, we're here working together to try to make this town a better place for residents and to help set up this town for the future. And I think there's a sense of that in other towns where I've worked, but there's also been a sense of distrust and a sense of competition and maybe politics and trying to fight things out in the next election, rather than trying to actually work together with the town you've got. And I'm sure all of that is here, too. I'm sure it happens. It happens in every town. But just from watching the way that this board reacts with respect to people who come in because they have genuine issues they care about, that's the way you want it to work. This is, you know, New England town management, town meeting style of government, the way you want it to act. We've got real issues here in Hatfield that people care about that are going to affect the future of this town. And I want to be the kind of leader who can help frame those issues for the board, frame those issues for residents, and help us make the right decisions for now and for the future. So I'm inspired by the sense of collaboration here and the willingness to dive into some of these challenges together and by the opportunity to be a person who can help us reach that. Was there a second part of that question I didn't answer?
Yeah, how would you measure your success?
Great. So I suppose you're supposed to say, as long as you can count to two people who are happy with you at any time, you're successful, but I'd like to go for three. And I'd really like to go for 3,000-plus with the residents of Hatfield as well. So obviously, no one's going to be happy with you all the time, but if people can respect the way I approach my job, can respect the way that I've tried to help administer the town, and feel like they can understand why I've helped make decisions that were reached, then I'd feel pretty good and successful. And then I'd also feel successful if it feels like we're not just managing what's in front of us, but also thinking about the future and really setting ourselves up for a strong future in Hatfield. And honestly, for the region at large, I think there's sometimes, you can think things are great if things are just good within the borders of your community, but you want to look a little broader sometimes regionally to see how things are going. So maybe not allowed to say that, but I think it's important.
Great, very good.
Perfect.
Well, it was a pleasure meeting you.
It was wonderful meeting all of you.
Thanks for coming all the way out here today.
Of course.
We appreciate it, and yeah, thank you. We're continuing our town administrator interviews. We now have another candidate, Michael Lipinski, joining us. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. As I mentioned, we have a bunch of questions, so we're going to dive right in. So congratulations on being a finalist for the town administrator position here in Hatfield. Can you give us a brief introduction of yourself and include what you think is the most relevant experience that has prepared you for this position and what draws you to Hatfield?
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you for inviting me here. I'm honored to be a finalist for the town of Hatfield administrative position. I was born and raised in Northampton, Massachusetts. Went to Northampton High School. After high school, went to Stonehill, which is a liberal arts college in Massachusetts, and then worked in Boston before moving to Pennsylvania to start a family. And just basically, that's a little bit of my background. So I'll jump to what drove me to Hatfield. I relocated back to Massachusetts in 2019, and it was because of the personal issues that were going on, but I'm back. I'm part of a big family here. I'm one of six brothers and sisters, and I'm glad to be back in the area. I love the Pioneer Valley, Northampton, and the surrounding areas, and Hatfield. My grandfather was a potato farmer in Hatfield, and so there's some history there with my family as far as agriculture is concerned. And I know a lot about Hatfield just from growing up in and around Hatfield. I played sports for Hamp High, and we played Smith Academy. And I'm very familiar with soccer, the Luke Ryans and all the people there. So it was great to see this as an opportunity for me to perhaps join your team to help out. What makes me, I think, qualified for this position? I have an MPA that I got while I lived and worked in Pennsylvania. I got from Villanova University, a master in public administration. Great education, great experience. I pride myself on having that credential. Really prepared me to, at the time, I was working for local government in their engineering department, getting a lot of infrastructure project management experience. And I wanted to advance my career, so I went nights to Villanova and was able to get my MPA. And that allowed me to pursue town manager positions. And the natural progression for my career was to take an assistant position, and I was the assistant manager for local government in Pennsylvania, Montgomery County, about 45 minutes northwest of Philadelphia. It was a population of about 18,000, full-service community, police, fire, recreation, utility, wastewater treatment plant. Worked there as an assistant for five years, and then I was promoted to manager and worked as the manager for about a year before resigning when I moved to Massachusetts. So my background as a manager, a local government manager, and my previous experience in Princeton, New Jersey, you know, gives me about 18 years of experience working for local government.
Excellent, thank you.
As you know, we are a small community. Can you tell us how you would become part of the community, or as a member of this community already, how will you reach out to the community in this new role?
So as your administrator, you know, I'd be at the building every day, and whether or not I would live in Hatfield is up in the air. I live in Boston right now, but will be relocating back to Western Mass this fall. So I haven't decided exactly where I'm going to live, but being part of this community and living in the community would be desirable. This is a beautiful place, and I would love to be a part of the community as a resident. However, if not, just being in the building every day. The way I would, you know, I would just welcome everyone to come in and say hello, to get to meet me, and maybe have some formal office hours just for that reason, just for people to come in, meet me, hear their concerns. I'm sure people have a lot of concerns in Hatfield, as everywhere else that I've worked, and I just would have a policy of welcoming people to come talk to me. As far as, you know, getting started, that would be my first course of business, would just be to welcome the community to meet me. Yeah.
Along the same lines of communication, we televise the meetings of many of our boards and committees, and we use our website and social media to disseminate news, but still there are communication gaps sometimes. Please describe how you think a small town can best communicate with its residents.
So I believe all those things that you mentioned are good ways to communicate. We had a physical paper newsletter in Upper Gwinnett that we issued quarterly that went out to people in the mail. People enjoyed that. It gave a full brochure of our recreation program for that quarter, also what was going on in town. Each of the department heads would write a paragraph or so about what they were doing in town and keeping people informed about the various departments, police, fire, wastewater treatment, public works, and things of that nature. Having a comprehensive newsletter like that, specifically to give people an update on what's going on in their actual, physical, local government, I think is a good idea to maintain. If you have one, that's great. I would love to maintain that. The social media aspect is, obviously, in this day and age, a lot of people communicate with their phones and don't read papers. So having, you know, a more robust website perhaps, I think, would be something I would propose to the select board, to look into maybe enhancing the website so that it has some interactive features on it. One thing I had mentioned in my first interview was the ability for the town to map its utilities, you know, kind of overlay all the maps you have on paper and put it into a geographical information system, GIS. I found that to be very helpful for residents, to be able to go and look up their property, look where the flood plain lies on their property, any restrictions on their property, what zone they were in, things of that. If people knew to the community or were looking to move to the community, I think that would be a helpful resource. Maintaining those Facebook pages, Instagram, doing things of that nature, I think, is great. And then having events where the community can gather and meet people as well, like the face-to-face interaction, I think, has, in my experience, been the most rewarding and most satisfying for both parties. You get to meet people, hear their concerns face-to-face, and I think that's primarily, that would be my, you know, the best way to communicate. But unfortunately, people are busy, and we have to try, you know, we have to reach people where they are, basically.
Great. So communication is valued very highly by this board. Can you please describe your communication style with reference to the board as well as to department heads? Also, how will you encourage ongoing and effective communication from all department heads? Couple of questions here. How would you deal with a department head that fails to provide you with requested information, and what might you do to resolve that issue?
Okay, so the first part of your question, my communication with the board would be such that you would know everything that's going on on a day-to-day basis that you wanted me to tell you. So, and I say that in that I would think the administrator would have some discretion to carry about day-to-day business, where if things are of normal course of business, I wouldn't have to be telling you every little thing that happened. But obviously, when it rose to the level where I felt uncomfortable not telling you or knowing what your comfort level was with my discretion, you would know about it. Innondating you with emails daily on a daily basis is not something I particularly would want to do, but if you want me to do that, I would. But my communication style with a three-member board, which I think is great, we had a five-member board, which was fine, but there's some challenging governments that have nine members on their board. So having a three-member board, I think, is very manageable to keep you up to date about the issues that you want me to tell you about, that I think you need to hear about. Anything that rose to the level, again, you need to know everything, obviously, but I just, I couch that with, I'm not going to tell you, well, Jim was late today, you know, something like that. But my communication style with my former board was that if I got a question from one of you, the answer would go out to everybody. I think that's important in that if some resident has an issue and they reach out to a board member they're comfortable reaching out to, and then they reach out to me for direction, I would want the rest of you to know what I'm telling everybody. I think that is a priority that I would make. That's something that I've done in the past, and I value that. Keeping people up to date, phone calls, email, constant communication. Now with department heads, people in the building, you know, we're all pretty close together. I know your police may be in a different location and fire, but, you know, I have no problem walking over to another building, talking to people on a daily basis, getting to know people, especially letting them know, anything you need, please contact me. Let me know. If I'm going to be a point person on certain projects or certain items that need to go through the administrator office, I want them to know that they can talk to me at any time, you know, given my schedule. If we need to meet, we can certainly set up meetings at any time to do so. You know, it's somewhat of a cliched, say, an open-door policy, but that's, you know, anybody that, it's such a small organization that we see each other all the time, and I think I have the type of personality where people would feel comfortable bringing their questions and concerns to me and not be intimidated to do so. I mean, I would hope that would never be the case with me. Having to deal with asking someone for information and they were non-responsive, I would follow up and be, you know, very polite and, you know, what's going on? I'm just wondering how you're working on getting the information I requested. Obviously, if it's of a sensitive nature, we would want to follow the rules and guidelines of confidentiality. However, you know, if it's day-to-day business stuff and I'm just not getting a response, I would want to talk to that person and see what's going on.
Great.
Can you please describe how you expect to develop a working relationship with the board? What does that interaction look like to you? And how will you seek input from us on all other matters, large and small, ongoing or unexpected?
Okay, so my relationship with you all would start on day one, meeting you, hopefully having meetings throughout the first, you know, 60, 90 days, regularly checking in with each other to see how things are going. The regular meetings of town business, obviously, I would be attending. Whatever boards or committees that each of you are assigned to, I would hope to see you on a regular basis. Communicating face-to-face would be, again, my primary wish to communicate with you all in a small organization. However, we all have cell phones and email and things, matter-of-fact type stuff. I would keep you up to date via email. Again, not to inundate you with information. You have other stuff to do, and I respect that. I respect the fact you're volunteering, basically, your time here, and I think that's very admirable. And whether or not you all have other jobs you're working, I don't know, but I would think that may be the case, and I would absolutely respect and not need input all the time on getting stuff done. And that's the first thing I would want to do as far as getting to know the board, is what is your level of discretion with me? Are you comfortable with me making decisions on, and what are you not? What do you want to personally be involved in? And I think that would set a good tone moving forward on us being able to establish a rapport that's such that I'm giving you information that you want and that you need, and vice versa, that you're communicating with me on stuff that I need to know, that perhaps you have had an encounter that I don't know about it. And I think that would set a good tone moving forward on us being able to establish a rapport that's such that I'm giving you information that you want and that you need, and vice versa, that you're communicating with me on stuff that I need to know. That perhaps you have had an encounter that I don't know about it. In my dealings, would that be helpful for you to let me know? So I would ask that that be a two-way street in that regard. Was there a follow-up on the second part of the question? I'm sorry.
I think that was...
Just...
I think you got it. Yeah. Town meeting can be confusing for residents despite our ongoing efforts to communicate the reasons for the articles. How can a board best prepare residents for the discussions and decisions necessary at a town meeting?
So I had watched a couple of your town meetings. I think it's that direct form of government, I think, is great. It can get chaotic, though. That's why you have a moderator. And I know you had a longtime moderator that may be recently retired, but you have someone new. I saw him negotiate your special meeting recently on the warrant you had to repair the culvert. You know, just let's take that for example. There was some wording in the warrant that necessitated clarification in that, and this is just my understanding of watching it, that the warrant language that was advertised had a debt exclusion language in there for Prop. 2.5, which would kind of give the implication that taxes could be hit. I mean, Proposition 2.5 is the law that limits your property tax. And then giving that clarification at the meeting by your council was very helpful to let the people know, "No, we're going for borrowing on this. This is going to be a debt issue. It's going to come out of the general fund, obviously, to pay back, but it's not a debt exclusion increase on your taxes." You know, just using that as an example, that was, I think, something that may have got lost in translation, and you handled it very well. I was involved in a town meeting where they were able to use some technology where they had voting via buttons. And that was, I was involved in their first meeting, that they had that technology, and it worked very well. There was a good amount of registered voters at the meeting, I would say maybe 50, and the hand count in that ballot can be confusing, and having people that aren't registered co-mingled with the registered voters, that type of thing. So having a good moderator, I think, is key to keeping those meetings moving and keeping them statutorily correct as well as, you know, let's get through this in a timely manner.
Great. Our town administrator works as our human resource officer, interacting with all town employees and overseeing the contract negotiation process with both our union and our department heads. Can you describe your style of dealing with personnel issues that may arise, and give us an example of how you've been successful or creative in solving a sensitive or complicated personnel situation?
So we had a situation in Upper Gwinnett Township where there was, people were getting disgruntled with, across the board, cost of living raises. So everyone would get, for example, 2.5% despite not taking into consideration performance. And that caused rifts between people where there was clearly a low-performing employee that was getting the same raise as a high-performing employee. So what we did, we had a very crude performance evaluation that nobody took seriously, and the management didn't take it seriously, the people didn't take it seriously, they passed in a form, and there wasn't really a lot of thought put into it. So we instituted a more robust performance evaluation system that included above and beyond raises for performance. That would be something, obviously, the board would have to consider. It's outside of what normal raises would be for everyone. There would still be a cost of living increase for everyone, but if you achieved certain goals during the year that you sat down with your manager at the beginning of the year and when it was time to set the budget for the following fiscal year or calendar year, those goals would be evaluated, and if you met those goals, if you're a high-performing employee, you would get an above and beyond raise. And that worked very well to motivate employees to continue doing the best job that they could do, because you don't want the situation where you have people making the same amount, getting the same amount of raises, but there's clearly a difference in performance. That can cause a lack of motivation on the person that's low-performing and a lack of motivation on the person that's high-performing. So having a reward mechanism, and it doesn't have to be a lot, you know, it could be an extra 1% or 1.5%, but something to reward high-performing employees outside of that normal situation. That's one thing we were able to do to keep morale high, because, you know, there's certain things in any organization where, you know, you can pay someone so much, and then you got, there's stuff after that has to take place to motivate people to do the best job that they can do. And that can be done with a lot of different programs, mission statements, higher purpose, things of that nature. But I truly believe in, one of the things I do daily, and I'll just end with this quickly, is one of the things, taken from me personally, giving people appreciation, recognition, encouragement on a daily basis goes a long way. Getting a job well-done, just recognizing someone's work and that they're doing a great job often gets missed in a busy workday, and I always appreciate it when someone comes up to me and says, "Great job. I noticed what you did, that you're doing a great job. Thank you." Appreciating that employee. Those little things, you know, outside of giving somebody a raise, those little things can go a long way in making that employee happy at work.
Thank you.
Can you please give us specific examples on how you have participated in contract negotiations and manage contracts to ensure compliance by both the town and the employees?
So I was part of two collective bargaining negotiations with our police union. I think the law for collective bargains are similar in Massachusetts and Pennsylvania. We're both commonwealths. So we had two police contracts come up for renewal. One, we were able to settle with the police outside of arbitration. One went to arbitration. The arbitration process in Pennsylvania was one where there would be two neutrals, and there would be a neutral, and then the bargaining unit would select their arbitrator, and the labor would, the management would select theirs. So there's a three-person arbitration panel, and you're at the whim of what their decision is, basically, on what the police are going to get for their contract. And typically, though, those are going to be in keeping with what the communities get. So you're not really going to get a big surprise and that nature. That was the only union we had. Our Public Works and everybody else was non-union. So our only union in the, and the fire in Pennsylvania is primarily volunteer. So two contract negotiations, I understand collective bargaining, and it's a long process to work with the police on issues. And one of the things we were able to, one of the highest costs to the town, to our town, and I think to your town, are your benefits, especially post-retirement healthcare. I don't know if you have that or whether it's part of the county system, but post-retirement healthcare is very, very expensive because it's forever, and it sometimes will go to the spouse. And we were able, we negotiated a more simpler, it was called a VIBA plan, which was, they contributed to it. It wasn't something that the town took, bore full responsibility for. So we were proud that we were able to reduce some of those post-retirement benefits.
Okay, this is a long one.
Yep, I'm ready.
Hatfield uses a team approach to our annual budget process. We start by communicating with all of our department heads, and then spend months working on a budget with our financial team that includes our finance committee, treasurer, accountant, et cetera. The town administrator serves as the quarterback, so to speak. We would be very open to streamlining the process to the extent that it is possible, all while making sure town residents have a chance to witness how the budget is built so they are knowledgeable and prepared as possible to make decisions at town meetings. Please describe your experience in working on a municipal budget, including specifics about the computer programs you use, and then can you please tell us about a budget practice that you have used that you found particularly successful or efficient?
Could you repeat that? I'm just kidding. So the budget process, you started off by saying, you know, "We meet with our department heads long before it's time to take it to town meeting." So that process was the same with us. We would, our budget had to be adopted statutorily. It wasn't, it's a different law down there, but it's, the principles are the same. Our budget had to be adopted by December 15th. That date may not be exact, but we would start meeting in late July, August, to go over the next year. Before I go on about that process, one thing I think that's very helpful throughout the year is to have a running, you know, I looked at your budget that you have posted, and it's not complicated, but it also doesn't have a lot of detail, and I would want to maybe enhance that a little bit in its presentation. One thing that was helpful for us is to meet quarterly with department heads and see where they're at as far as, "Here's your budget for the year. How much have you spent? What do you, what's your forecast?" Basically, do a lot of forecasting throughout the year so that we're able to catch some overruns if they're going to occur early. So forecasting is a big part of the budget process, just during the year as a matter of course of business, having a regular meeting to go over what we think is, lies ahead. That's expected, the things that we expect are going to happen that normally happen. So we would start that budget process in August. We would meet with each department head, and they would bring, basically, their wish list for the coming year, and would have everything they want, and that's when we would start to go through and say, "Well, you can't have everything." So we would, you know, and that, that's kind of like a little game, but they know what they want going in. This is what's important. This is what we need. And it's not that, you know, it's not a game, I shouldn't say it's a game, but it's, you know, it's like they'll bring a budget that, "Yeah, we need this. This is going to die in three years. What do you need this year? This is what we can afford. This is our revenue stream for the coming year. Your budget is overrun by $150,000. You know, we need to make cuts." That's just a regular practice that happens. And where you make those cuts is really what direction the board wants the town to go. Do you want to buy a new police car, or do you want to invest in the school and buy laptops for the students? You know, things of that nature. Do you want to invest in your wastewater treatment plant, your infrastructure? You set priorities, and I hope we get to your plan that you've put together, but you set priorities on what you want to do in a comprehensive plan, and hopefully, your budgeting is in keeping with that as far as your goals, the goals that you set in that plan. So keeping your budget attached to some type of goal that you have for the town that you've communicated to the residents, I think, is a good way to keep coherence as far as what we're doing. This is what our goal is. Here's what our budget is, and here's where we're going to put our money this year to reach that goal. Streamlining the process would be getting people together and hopefully having people prepared when they come in the first time with a good, you know, "This is what I'm going to need," that they, so that, you know, going down the line where we don't have some unexpected thing pop up, where now we have to deal with this, and we have a couple of weeks left before we need to adopt this thing or bring it to the board, bring it to the town meeting. The one thing I think would be helpful, and I, you know, to have a good presentation about, here's, like, the pie chart is one thing that we use. This is our revenue. This is the piece of the pie. Here's our expenditures. I think graphically, that's just a really easy way to present a budget to the public. This is where our money's going. This is where our money comes from. Have it in a visual graphical sense rather than an Excel spreadsheet, which can be difficult and small to read online. So having some type of budget presentation each year that can go out prior to town meeting to the residents would be posted on the website, I would think. We had a budget presentation where I wrote a budget message, basically, to the board, stating succinctly, "Here's what our last year looked like. Here's some of our accomplishments. Here are some of our challenges. And here is what we want to do moving forward." So having a well-written budget message, and then backing that up with a graphical presentation of the budget, you know, something that the residents can take in very easily rather than have to kind of, you know, dive into the numbers.
The town administrator serves as a procurement officer for Hatfield. This involves a solid understanding of the state's procurement laws and a strict adherence to all of those requirements. Can you describe your experience with this process, including preparing bid specifications, tracking bids, and then awarding contracts?
So I don't have the, there's a designation in Massachusetts, Certified Purchasing Officer, I think. I don't have that designation, but I don't know if they require it. I would be happy to go to that training and get that if the board so desired. My practical experience with purchasing, some things we did in Upper Gwinnett Township, we were part of a collective purchasing program called, it was PennBid, there was a name for it, but it was Co-Stars or something like that. I don't quite remember, but it was a collective purchasing that I'm sure you have as part of the COG here in Hampshire County, where the town could purchase materials in bulk and take advantage of economies of scale. I think that's something that I would recommend keep doing or start doing. Those are ways that towns can purchase materials with other towns in larger quantities so that the price goes down. As far as bid specifications and projects, man, I have done so much of that. I have, in Princeton, I was part of an in-house engineering department. The town engineer was a paid staff member, and we wrote our own specifications and put our bids out. So we would create a book back then, before everything was online, that people would purchase, and I was directly involved in the specifications upfront, you know, the summary of pay items, like how you get paid, penalties, how a project is successful when you have a good specification. If you don't have a detailed way and not let contractors take advantage of some loopholes that may be in there, it all starts with having a solid set of specs and clearly defining, "This is what you're, we want you to do, and this is how you're going to get paid for it." And that sometimes can be a challenge with contractors where they haven't done their homework, and they get stuck with bidding on something where they're overwhelmed, and obviously, the town would work with them in that regard. But I have a lot of experience in project management, bidding infrastructure projects. We had a, we owned and operated our own wastewater treatment plant, so we did, we had to do a lot of upgrades to our plant to meet our MPDES permit. We were on a watershed in Pennsylvania that was categorized by the EPA as impaired, which meant that we, our discharge had to be treated very specialized, and it costs a lot of money, but we were luckily able to get grants. And a lot of projects associated with that, WWTP, I was involved directly in that in Upper Gwinnett. I have tons of project management experience and writing specifications. Technically, I'm not an engineer, but I know it.
Grants are an invaluable financial resource for the town of Hatfield, allowing us to do projects and offer programs that would be unaffordable otherwise. Please tell us, and be specific as possible, of grants that you have applied for, been awarded, and then executed, including reporting to the grant agency. And more specifically, do you have direct experience with larger and more demanding grant programs like MassWorks?
So there's something similar in Pennsylvania, which I'll get into, but to start, I have a lot of grant writing, administering, closing out grants experience. We, I'll just give you an example. I think this exists in Massachusetts as part of a federal program. There's a Safe Streets to School where you can get grant money to install sidewalks so that the kids can walk to school safely. Those grants are typically not sophisticated in, as far as applying for those. if, you know, bringing a consultant, if, if the town is going after a very highly sophisticated grant, that, that the, myself or the team here in Hatfield just doesn't have the capacity to handle. And I say that because in Pennsylvania, we, it's called Growing Greener. It's, it's administered by the DEP through the EPA. It's a federal grant program where money's given for environmentally projects that are good for the environment. And we had a, a grant that was about $8 million that we got from, from the federal government through the Penn, Pennsylvania DEP to make improvements to our wastewater treatment plant to treat our effluent so that it met the, the permit. And we also had problems, I know that Hatfield is in the flood plain, a lot of the area, and by nature, your sewer plant's going to be at the lowest point in, in town, but that makes it vulnerable to flooding. The MVP stuff that you're doing is great. The grants associated with that in Pennsylvania were very similar. Our plant was at the low point in our town, and during high, like, the, and it wasn't like river flooding that you may have sporadically here, it was these high-intensity thunderstorms in the summer that would cause our plant to overflow, basically. So, and when your plant or manhole start overflowing, you get fined by the state, and those fines can be expensive. Now, the state will work with you if you're trying to do the right thing, and obviously, we had to make upgrades for our plant. It was, our technology was old, and we needed to increase the capacity to meet those high storm events. So the plant had to be rerated for a higher storm event, and we were able to do that through the acquisition of a Growing Greener grant. It was a big grant. I want to talk about grants a little bit more. Sometimes grants are not worth it. Sometimes the, the amount of sunk costs that you put into a grant, not having the guarantee that you're going to even get it, I think you have to evaluate that process upfront because you could put a lot of time into applying for a grant, making it perfect as you want it to make it, and it's just, for whatever reason, you don't get awarded that grant, and, and those monies aren't recovered. So it's, you got to be careful sometimes about which grants you want to go after. It's good to check with other communities and what their experience with, was working with the grant reviewers, the agency that's giving the grant, what type of paperwork do they want? My experience with some grants is that the, the reimbursement process can be incredibly difficult. You have to have and maintain very meticulous records, and for someone to stay on top of that is a full-time job sometimes, if it's a sophisticated project. You need pay stubs, receipts, and all this stuff has to be meticulous. I mean, if you don't have it, you're not getting the money. So, and I just say that grants are great, absolutely, the town should take advantage of any grant opportunity it can get, but just be aware that sometimes it, it may not be worth it to go after that. But I do have a, we, just heading, we used a consultant, and, and the money that we paid for this consultant to prepare the grant application for us was peanuts, I mean, compared to what we got in return. And he knows the system, basically, this, this consulting firm. He knows the people that are going to review it, he knows what to expect, he knows how to write it. So if, if there was a bigger grant that the town was going after, it would be wise to maybe seek some technical help in that regard. But I, smaller grants, I've written, I know how to fill out the application, and I know what to expect on the end. I mean, that's the most important part, is that the money is reimbursed typically. So you have to put Hatfield budgets, the money in their general fund budget, you spend it, and then, you know, Mike, did we get that money yet? So I'm still waiting, sorry, they want this, we gave it to them, now they want this, you know, so it can be frustrating.
Towns often have projects that take years to complete. Hatfield's no different. Additionally, we have several large projects, and we hope to at least explore in the next five to 10 years, such as a public safety building, council on aging space. What is your direct experience with managing large projects from idea to completion?
So we, large projects in Upper Gwinnett Township were mostly infrastructure. We did, however, have a, we had, we had a, they have a community center there that was old, and the roof leaked, and it was just old, and there was constant maintenance. So the town explored building a community center. And part of that process was hiring a design firm to give us options, basically. So I would, I would advise if you're going to go after, if you're going to build a library or a community center or some other type of building facility, that you consult with somebody that gives you option A, B, C, D, and see what the town comfort level is with, with the costs and with the amenities. So they threw out this community center that had an indoor running track on the second floor, it had everything, a pool, you know, pickleball courts, it was nuts to bolts, and it costs, you know, $25 million, right? So that, that's not going to, going to fly, so give us, give us something that's scaled down a bit, and, and having those options available to you can inform you to make a better decision, how you want to move forward, and what, what the town really needs, basically. You don't want to build something that no one's going to use. So, you know, having a sense of, so prior to even going into the, the concept of where we're going to build it, what we're going to build, what is it that the town wants and needs? So doing some simple surveys would be helpful to see what, what do we want, what do we need now? Do we need some tennis courts, or do we want a full multi-use path, or something of that nature? Do we need a new library? Do we need an addition to the library? So getting a, a sense of, you know, again, you don't want to build something that's going to be empty half the time, and, and that can be embarrassing for the, the board and the staff here, and it's not something that I have direct experience doing, but, you know, we were cautioned against doing things of that nature. We, we were able to build, it was small, but there was, the town wanted pickleball courts. We had this beautiful central park that was right where the municipal complex was there, the police was there, and there was, we had this beautiful old wooden playground structure. It was a great gathering space. We had a carnival there every year, and we had tennis courts, lighted basketball courts, and we just didn't have room for pickleball. There just wasn't any room to put these courts, so we were able to modify two tennis courts into pickleball when they wanted to play pickleball. And then we kind of had to work with the tennis people because, you know, there was a little bit of conflict there because they're going to be using their court. But major projects, I'm not sure what the town has in mind. If there's something specific, I could go into further detail, but in general, you want to make sure that you're, you're building what the town wants and needs.
Two more questions.
Yes.
We're getting there. Hatfield has just completed a very in-depth comprehensive, comprehensive plan that will guide us into the next 20 years.
Yes.
With a special emphasis on housing.
Yes.
Please describe any work you have done on housing projects in other communities.
Yep, so we had several developments come in for approval in Upper Gwinnett Township. It was primarily a built-out community, there wasn't a lot of vacant land. However, there was redevelopable land, and that came in the form of an old concrete plant that closed, that the developer purchased the rights to that. And then we had some, some open land where we had some homes come in. I believe Massachusetts has an affordable housing element, that you need to provide certain amount of affordable housing when you're building housing units, so that's the law, basically. So that's something that the town would have to adhere to. As far as bringing in, you know, your, your middle-class community, let's say, the developer is going to build what he's going to be able to sell. So we had developers come in that would come in with a plan that the town didn't like. It was too dense, there were too many units, there wasn't enough open space, there wasn't enough amenities, it was too close, there was, there was no connectivity as far as walking paths, it was out there in the middle of nowhere, there were some problems with traffic that would, we're going to be concerned with, you know, people coming in and out of this development. So I have a lot of experience working from developers coming in with housing. This is what we want to build, you know, we want to build $750,000 homes that we think the market can bear here, and the town was careful to say no at first. And then eventually, you come to terms, and you have a plan that everyone can live with. One of the things we had in our zoning ordinance is a cluster development zoning ordinance, which allowed for denser setbacks in lieu of having a great open space. So you preserved, so what we did was, there was, he came in with a bunch of houses right up on the street, we were able to, he redesigned it so that as you entered the property, it was all open space, so that as you drove by it, you didn't see the homes. The woods were preserved, and the homes were down the hill and into the, into the area. So the nature of that drive and the community wasn't hit with this glaring new housing development, but you're still, you're still getting more tax, you know, base for, for the community. For people to move in here that want to live, Hatfield's a great town. I mean, if you have places to build and developers have a market for it, I would, I would highly suggest looking at your zoning ordinance, and I know that your, your master plan contemplated that. I was able to read that, I think that was an excellent document prepared by the, and helping with your committee and, you know, the planning commission, it was, it really was a very well, very thoughtful document, and I got a lot out of it. I brought it here, the summary of the matrix and goals, and the affordable housing element, you know, you have seniors that you need that want to stay in place, so, you know, it's kind of, it's a balancing act always with these things. You, you have to balance the, the need for affordable housing with what the market can bear, because developers are, are not going to build something where they can't profit, it's just the nature of it. So having that mindset going in is that, yeah, we'll work with you on this, but we want something in return. And most, in my experience, they know this, going in, and it's just like they'll put everything out there and are willing to scale it back, knowing what their bottom line is, basically, so to speak. But I also think, just being a single guy now, housing is very expensive. I mean, I couldn't afford to buy a house in Hatfield, to be quite honest with you. And that's something that, that I'm, I'm experienced directly, so, you know, having perhaps a, an affordable housing element of some other type of housing where you can make some townhouses or apartments part of that, you know, tastefully done, too. We don't want something that the community's not going to embrace in life. So having design standards and things of that nature, which, which I think your plan did a great job in, in addressing those things.
Thank you. Lastly.
Okay.
What aspects of this job most inspire you, and how will you measure your success as a town administrator?
So my, what, what inspires me most, so I didn't go into the public sector to get rich, obviously, and I really did not go into it for any type of political aspiration. I liked the work that I was doing in the engineering department, I was able to work on projects and, and really learn a lot about what local governments do. The services that local governments deliver to their residents are a part of their daily life. Some people don't even know what's going on when you flush the toilet or where the water comes from, and these things are very important. People take that for granted, and I was very interested in getting into this and, and understanding, you know, what goes into creating a community where people have a high quality of life. And part of that is having what I call a public service motivation, and basically, what that comes down to is my goal is to be helpful. That's, I don't look for, my success is measured on how much I can help somebody. People that come into this office and are looking for help will never be turned away by me. If I need to meet with them another time, I'm busy, obviously, that's, that's something that I would set up with them, but any concern that somebody has, they can come directly to me to talk about it. And, you know, I dealt a lot of with people coming in, having complaints, my neighbors draining onto my property, all kinds of stuff. All day, people will come in with these property issues. And a lot of the times, they'll come in angry, maybe some staff member had a bad encounter with them, and my approach was to take them into our little conference room off to the side, sit them down, and listen, like, what do you got to tell me? And listen carefully to their concerns, and coming up with some type of solution that would be agreeable to both parties, and that's sometimes hard to get to that, but not giving up on it is something that I pride myself in. You have situations where, you know, like private property issues, especially, like, we just don't have control over this private property issue, that's not what we do, it's illegal. We can't go in there and put a pipe in to pipe your drainage at the town's expense and on private property. However, what we can do is mutually look for a solution that benefits a lot more people to maybe improve drainage in a certain, in a certain area by increasing capacity of a pipe or extending a pipe in a drain so that people can tie their sump pumps in underground and do things of that nature so that these drainage issues, a lot of what I dealt with were drainage issues, quite frankly, and I think you probably have a lot of that in, in Hatfield, just because of the low-lying nature of the, the area. So, you know, that's, the reason I got into this, honestly, and, and the point I am in my career and in my life now, that's my goal, is to just, is to try and help people out with their problems when they come in on a day-to-day basis, and making sure that they know that I'm listening to them and I hear you, and I'm going to do what I, the best I can to solve the problem. It may not be what you want or what you expect, but hopefully, it'll be something that you can walk away with happy.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We got through all of them.
All right.
Excellent. Well, thank you, it's been a pleasure meeting you.
Great.
Thanks for coming out today.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
It's been a pleasure meeting you all, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right.
Thank you very much.